Well, agreement, we call this meeting an intent for permission of order. This is a continuation meeting, I suppose. This is our annual work session. It's sort of the same thing we did last year. We begin discussion about our budget. And here from right here in the apartments. And that's on purpose, purpose of this. We have a, if we didn't get an agenda, we got several loads plugged into the room. We'll try to stick pretty close to that. And Mr. Manager, if you could, let's either stay with this or ahead of it. If that makes sense. So my welcome was to take 10 minutes, and I took three. So will we write in? One thing, if we could, Derek, I'm concerned so of you, I'd ask Tommy Jenkins, who's our EDC Director. And Tommy, we're glad you're here. Tommy will be here anyway. But I think everybody in the room is aware of the situation with Caterpillar and the decisions they've made regarding their Franklin COVID plans. So I've asked Tommy to give us an update. A little background, we were made aware of this. I think it's about four minutes after employees found out. We were at a conference, and I speak myself, but my cellphone and official field cell blew up. People calling concerned about it. And as we explained to them, and I've said to the media before, you've got to be careful, government, don't be interfere with private business. But if there's things we can do to assist and preserve your jobs here, we want to do that. But with that said, you have to understand this is a, this is a private business decision made by a private company. And, but if there's something we can do to try to help preserve these jobs, and you want to do that, but I placed a call to Tommy. And I think within about 10 minutes, Tommy had representatives from Department of Commerce and the Governor's Office on the phone, and began some conversations. So Tommy, Derek, would you ask Tommy to do that now, or it turned out to you?
One thing I would like to do, if we could, do a quick item of business.
Sure.
Before we get started, I would like to add to the agenda, the consideration, and you should have it in front of you, of the agreement for the marketing with scoreboards and monument display center for the Parker Meadows Complex. This is basically the scoreboards and monument signage at Parker Meadows Complex. Our Recreation Director, Mr. Seth Adams, has been working on this for quite some time. The attorney has just finished the review of this contract, and he feels that like that it is ready to go upon board approval. It does fall within the budgeted amount for the signage that we allotted for this project. And it was my understanding and conversation with our Recreation Director, Mr. Seth Adams, that we, he consulted numerous signed companies as he was looking into the signage at this project, and this one was the most financially feasible. So I would request that upon that information that, and this satisfactory review by our county attorney and our Recreation Director, that we go ahead and enter into this agreement with Major Display Inc.
We do have Tammy Whitaker, is that right?
Yes.
With us from Major Display here today, who have questions with their two documents. One is a design and signage, agreement for designing of signage and scoreboards for Parker Meadows Complex. And basically, in a nutshell, what Seth has been able to work out with Major Display Inc. is for them to do the work set forth in that agreement, the design work for basically everything out there at Parker Meadows. And that that would be $2,500 for that work. Now, in addition to that, there's a second feature. There's an agreement for marketing with scoreboards and monument display center that will be installed out at Parker Meadows Complex. And basically, the way this document or agreement would work is Major Display would do all of the installation of all nine scoreboards, as well as what they call an LED monument display center, which is, I think that the, correct me if I'm wrong, at the entrance of the park that we, and basically, they're going to do that at their, basically, at their expense. The, what they are going to get in exchange for that is the exclusive right to advertise on those signs for a period of two years. Now, that having been said, the way that works is there will be a revenue sharing arrangement between County and Major Display Inc. for those advertising revenues. The way that will work is initially, Major Display will be allowed to recoup basically what those signs will cost the county to purchase, manufacture, and install upfront. Okay? Once that has recouped from the advertising revenue, and at that point in time for a period of two years, there would be a split of revenue, 70% going to Major Display, 30% going to Megan County. After that two-year period, then there would be a revenue split of 50/50. What this does, obviously, for County is that Megan County not have to come up with the money to purchase and install those scoreboards upfront, which is a substantial sum of money. And down the road, it actually gives Megan County the potential for a revenue stream. While there's no way to know exactly how much that would be, I am advised that it is anticipated that once we start sharing revenue with Major Display, that we could look to potentially as much as $36,000 a year being shared in that, in those portions that I mentioned. Is that correct? Can I get that pretty well, Tammy?
It's pretty close, yeah.
What would you call it? And ask me if you're good to make that?
You as well? I understand what you mean, Chris. Yeah, considering.
Actually, I found that from where you live on Corbin Road.
Yeah, somebody said I spoke to you.
I didn't know that we were bypassing.
A lot, yeah, sure. Wrong pickup, in case I didn't hear.
Okay. But, I mean, Seth, just talk to me a little bit about this, and I think with Chester a lot, and this seems to be his recommendation. Chester, I guess my question is, is this an acceptable way to talk about this? Is this a good way to approach this?
Yeah, in fact, the original documents that were submitted, I felt like there might need to be a little tweaking done on those in order to get it in a form that would be comfortable to County. And so the documents that you have, or your actual documents that we've considered.
Okay. Tammy, anything to add, or to clarify the agreement?
Well, I'd like to let you know that we've been proactive on the project, because I know that the time is of the essence. So we have committed eight major sponsors with $40,000 of revenue to date. We've received as of about 15 minutes ago, $18,000 of those dollars. And so we have taken the position of, we want to be a part of this project and the community. So we have ordered all the electronics for the scoreboards that will be necessary out of those funds. And we are prepared to make this thing happen, and hopefully get those scores as appropriate by March. That's it.
In speaking with Seth, he has indicated to me that indeed, as Roma indicated, that this was the lowest responsible arrangement that he had received. And so I think you would need to basically approve that as such, and if you were inclined to approve it.
Who actually owns the school?
We belong to the school.
At the time of installation, it transfers ownership to you.
So Tammy makes enough money and she can retire in five years. We're no longer a company. Didn't want.
Oh, there is a corporation like that, by the name of Major Display Inc., which is a North Carolina corporation. That's who you're actually doing your contract with. Now, if she should retire in five years, and the business has lots of value at that point in time, I suspect that she will sell her stock in that company to someone, and they will then become basically the deputized.
Because they're being, they're being hungry.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a handset on our books. And we also provide the maintenance over that 10-year period, so.
So if lots go out, something happens.
Derek, you're required to maintain the power up to any communication lines up to it, but from the board forward, like that here.
If you can tell any of the advertising stuff, what's advertising for you and the board?
Uh, no, not at this time.
If they come home and say, we'll give you $10,000, put a cartel on the board, that's fine.
If it's fine with you, it's fine with us. However, if that agreement extends to, we'll give you $10,000, and we want an exclusive on your vendor rights, that's nothing that we would get involved in. We would bring it back to you guys, and you would have to make that decision.
For example, we had a corporate sponsor, and we haven't sold anything like this, but we had a corporate sponsor give money, and we named the field after them. That would be, you know, right to do that.
Well, I even need to see Tammy, because she, by the terms of this agreement, will have the exclusive rights to, to deal with field naming and advertising on those signs.
On the sign?
Yeah.
On the actual scoreboard, by its own site. I have given Chester a copy of the brochure that we're using in the design. And I do understand your question, that you have a particular field that you want to name after, I believe it's Penland Contracting Construction, perhaps? Seth has talked to me about that?
Maybe.
Yeah, okay. Well, right now.
We haven't discussed any, any of that. For example.
Okay.
D. Claude passed away. I've had several people meet, or you name one of the fields out there for him. That's not because I gave him money, it's naming a field for someone who is an exposure fan there. We want to do that, not on the scoreboard, but just maybe a plaque on the.
Correct. That we do not control anything other than whose name is going on the front and the back of each scoreboard?
But you do need to understand that each field is contemplated by this agreement. That each field will be named for someone whose purposes, rights to have that field named for them on the front and back of the field.
Does that make sense?
We have a list. I've provided a map of the eight committed folks who have said who would like that position. So eight out of the nine I have committed right now, have one left. And I'm happy to review them with you. We make a, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We make a conscious effort. We don't sell anybody who we feel is inappropriate for a youth field. So we've avoided alcohol, tobacco, pornographic, so they're all, you know, I was going to say, they're not in that position before by a person who had a huge gun shop, and they were like, here's a check for $15,000. I'm like, it's a youth league.
And indeed, we took one step further, and any proposed advertising or sponsorship or it can be done here. Has to be.
I was going to make sure that Bill's adult model story.
At least not photographically.
But you do need to understand that Tammy's company, you know, they have, look at this project, front still under, and the way they make it work is that they have the exclusive right to arrange for the naming and sell the naming. Obviously, their numbers change if you, if you come to her next week and say to her, we've got nine fields out there, you can sell the naming rights for five of them, but we need four of them because we've got other plans for those. The numbers are not going to work for her that long. There's a big, a big sum of money that goes with those naming rights. It is going to, in large measure, pay for the cost of your signs.
Does the county, County Fisher Biologist, is there a place in their board, proceed for naming these, or is school board stuff, you have to see?
I'm not aware of that.
I'm not aware. The school board, the situation, you know, the process, you have to, I think I can't have to say.
Yeah, we do a lot of school board work, especially in Orange County. And so we have to go through the, I think it's a BOCS, which is a board of approval prior to our permitting, and the school board has to approve that. So I'm familiar with that.
We're in effect going to be able to approve what our, if you're going to do that.
We would have final say so, if we felt like adult model story.
Now, before it goes up.
We can say no.
In fact, you need to designate somebody to make that decision, and have the county buy the company's ring. But I would recommend that you name your company.
Do other counties have a process? Does County Magic Group use a little just for that thing?
It's typically, it's, we haven't sold into counties before. They're local municipalities, cities, or schools. And so the county as a whole is not something that we've had that experience with. And then a lot of times, the, like, the little leagues are run by a, like a boosters club. I'm happy to establish a process with you folks, because I'm sure we're going to come across it again.
What about your AAU, other stock organizations, any problems with that?
No, because a lot of the AAU leagues are buying the product on a retail basis outright, and so we ship directly. For instance, I got four boards going to Utah. But they're paid for by, they either sold the advertising themselves, and they just cut us a check and fold, or they're self-funded, they're not going through an advertising program.
What would the scoreboards cost us to install the biggest block out there?
The boards themselves, the way we've got them spec currently, they're a five-by-ten board, they're all aluminum construction, LED, and they're controlled by an Android app. They're about $5,600 retail. Then you have the expense of the steel for the installation, and all of the installation contracting, so we've got foundations, footings, foundations, et cetera. So in a nutshell, somewhere between $9,000 and $10,000 is your retail value per yard.
There's nine.
We've got $90,000.
$90,000, yeah. Long way to the answer, sorry.
You do need to understand there's also the LED monument display, which is apparently a much more complicated piece of equipment.
A couple of things appeal to me about this. One is not having to spend $90,000 on scoreboards.
Right.
And then two, you give some of your folks a bit of ability to support the project.
Yeah, I was going to say, not only that, but Major Display indicated to me that they're going to be looking to work with local vendors on some of their.
We'll be outsourcing some of the manufacturing and the graphics here locally in town. So we've established relationships with a sign, signing vendor, because we don't do our printing in-house. We buy all our electronics here locally.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, the monument display, you're guessing is going to be in the $40,000 range.
$40,000.
So between the two of them, it would have been an outlay, you know, in a percentage of $100,000.
So at the end of the day, we want to enable field, Chester, John, and Memorial to do it.
You need to tell that person to go talk to Tammy.
Can you and him go through Qs?
Yes.
Correct.
And why don't you say no?
First, I'm going to look at the availability of naming rights, and currently, we have eight commitments and one available. I would look to the board to say, are you okay with that?
That would have done without our knowledge. That would already done without our knowledge.
Yeah, I think Seth, in the interest of trying to save the county some money, went ahead and started working with Tammy and her company to try to get things moving, in the hopes of there being some, being some signs out there.
So to answer your.
Do we have to, do we have the final present?
Yes.
You do. And I have a list of the commitments as they stand today. So if you want to review them, I'm happy to walk through them with you. Okay. But to answer your question, the first thing we'd look at is availability of the space. Secondly, is board approval. And so if those two things are feasible, then we would go ahead and offer that to the client.
Tammy, is this on an angle basis, or?
Well, because it's a 10-year contract, the naming rights are set up with a 10-year commitment for $5,000. What that gets the customer is their name on the front and the back of that field's board. And then we've included a four-by-eight advertising panel, which will hang on the backstop of that field as well, and one year of advertising on the LED entrance monument. If they want to extend the two-year four-by-eight ad, it's $1,000 a year, bringing that total contract to $13,000 over the 10-year period. A portion of which.
The $5,000 is for 10 years.
Is for 10 years with a name, and then the advertising has a two-year part to it. I've included that in the package, too.
There we go. Okay. Are you sharing, so after 10 years?
No, after two.
After they recoup their costs? I heard Chester.
Basically, the, the cost that it would, the cost to County for the first installation of those, of those, every two, from the naming rights as well as that amount. And I think y'all are projecting that to be two to three years, is that right?
There should be revenue share on the beginning of year three, which is when we'll start selling the ads that are on the lower portion of the scoreboard, renewable. That value is $3,000 a year times nine fields. And then we have the four-bites on the backstop, nine of those, at $1,500 a piece. So we estimate that the gross advertising sales on year three will be about $36,000. We will split that on a 70/30 basis for the first five years, and then the balance of the contract is 50/50. And that should be, it should consistently generate about $36,000 a year after year two.
Tammy, I made this under, what you just said, that I had a.
I think you had it reversed for our last contract, don't you? You find it in here?
Yeah, the way this reads presently, and then taking some of these to record.
Right.
It indicates that after you recoup your expense, then for a two-year period thereafter, we would share revenue on a 70/30 basis. And then for the balance of the contract, it would be on a 80/80 basis. Is that correct?
I, what we, and Seth, can you confirm it? The five years after was at a 70/30, and the balance of the 10 years was at the 50/50. That was our original agreement. Correct?
I thought the last five years was a 50/50. From year after you recoup your money up until year five, it was a 70/30.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're making county residents, so if that makes you all happy and we can move forward, we'll go with that.
All right.
How's that?
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the way it is drawn right now, we're not necessarily tied to year three, or four, or whatnot. What we're saying is, if it takes you one year to recoup all of your expense, then for a two-year period after that, it'll be a 70/30 split, and then thereafter, it will be a 50/50.
That is correct. So if we achieve our threshold by May of this year, our revenue share will start in January of 2016.
Get on the other hand, if it takes five years to do it.
We'll all be waiting for our money.
Exactly. All right. Tom, we're good on that.
So income work, if we're still income work, for the community separation, do you have to have money on the table?
On our end, yes, because we have to fund the manufacturing of the product.
So your signing would be the scoreboard, and then some signing on the backstop?
Correct.
But the field being named, are we going to sign there?
For the first two years. And then what we'll do is, we'll approach the person who has the naming rights for 10 years. And I'll give you an example, Megan Bank has committed to naming rights in the field, for a field. They want to keep the four-by-eight ad behind the backstop for the entire 10 years. So they've committed in a long-term contract to a $12,000 ad agreement. Had they have not done that, after two years, we would go out and sell that four-by-eight advertising to another advertiser if they did not want to renew that portion. That makes sense?
But they do get to keep the.
But the remaining.
Scoreboard naming for the 14 years.
That's a field that's named.
For 10 years.
For 10 years.
Would the field just involve things to Megan County businesses, or do we go outside of that?
I think you theoretically could go out to anybody who wants to advertise. Again, it's a function of, the ad needs to come, or the request for an ad comes from somebody in business or otherwise, to Tammy, if she thinks it's appropriate and she wants to sell, and at that point in time, she can communicate with the county to see if the county approves that. The county would need the board to approve.
Could we look at prioritizing the place of the county, advertising to have first priority? Is everybody you've got support?
Currently, everybody is. Occasionally, for instance, in other communities, Chick-fil-A is a big supporter of athletics, U. of the Olympics in particular. So a local store would, would buy that Chick-fil-A of Clayton. So, you know, or a sporting goods company may purchase the big Pepsi Coca-Colas. We do work with them also. But currently, everybody is a small local business in Megan County, and if you'd like to keep it that way, we will focus our advertising on that community first, before we reach out to anybody outside of the county.
I see. Is the recommission about okay with the issue?
Yes.
Right forward.
And I would say, if there's a greater demand for advertising than what we're contemplating right now, I suspect the county is probably going to get with Tammy and Major Display to make to present some additional options.
Yes, absolutely.
Is foundation, is foundation related? Thank you, good partners, too.
That's correct. I've been approached by the Rotary of Franklin, and I consider them a nonprofit foundation. If it's an individual, I believe, as long as you approve it, I'm okay with that.
And you don't actually have any actual reason to, you've got your investment.
Typically, that is our process. We get our investment first. When we've met that threshold of cost, we go into production and installation. Because we literally live and manufacture here in town, we are, I've kind of put the cart before the house, or the horse. I want to make sure that you have the boards for the grand opening, the spring market. But that is typically our policy.
That's not.
That is how it reads in the language.
Yes, but the date is not in here, so it won't actually be.
No, later than June 15th is what we've compromised on.
Questions, Mr. Chairman? Do you mind reading the names of the people you've got?
I do that.
I had, I had.
I saved one for you.
Okay.
The naming, here's a, we've got a couple of clues also this year. This is the naming, the regalia, location maybe?
And, Mr. Manager, you looked over this, you're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, Seth Adams has split his questions of him asked to process that he followed in determining to look at major display. My understanding is, is that he communicated with a number of different companies and determined that this would be the lowest responsible range. Is that correct?
It is. Whenever we were in the process of getting numbers for the whole park together a while ago, I looked at purchasing the scoreboards outright from a scoreboard company. And they're about $7,000 a piece just for a basic scoreboard. Then I approached Coca-Cola, I met with them a couple times. They're willing to put some money to it. They would never guarantee how much, how many scoreboards they would do. And one of the things that they would require would be for us to go exclusive with Coke. And it's hard for us to do that if we're going to sub the concession stands out, telling people, you know, from right away, listen, you have to, you have to use Coke to be able to do that. Then I met Tammy, who kind of does the same thing, just on the advertising. And she gave me the pitch that basically she just has with y'all. And in my opinion, it'll benefit everything. Number one, it gets us the scoreboards without the upfront money from us. And they're nicer than the ones that we would be able to afford if we just put up basic scoreboards like that at the red part now. They ran wirelessly, they have a bigger upside to them than the other ones. But on the other side, you know, we won't have to now sell banners and stuff that hang on the outfield fence. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but there's a way to do it where it'll look cleaner, more professional, and keep the park looking the way we want it to look. And she, on the other side of her, her contract is going to help tie all the signs together where everything out there kind of, kind of looks the same. So it's my opinion that this is, this is a good deal. That's why you have contracts in front of you now. There are definitely other avenues, but I, but I feel this is the best one.
Let's say Seth, for instance, we had a large donor who wanted a soccer game made back then. They want to, they want that soccer game made now for a large donation. Is that within our scope?
I would say we'd have to agree to that.
We need to work it out with Tammy for the first 10 years. We could speak to the balance of that. But the reality of it is, is I think we need to have a whole conversation with them.
Well, the naming rights would be bought for 10 years on that field anyway. And after 10 years, this contract is null and void, that we can either go into another one with her at that time, or it's that all.
They do for the field, they can keep that same one.
Forever, yes.
That's your decision as of that time of year.
That's totally up to us. So that's not a problem.
Whether it's more or less time, that will be a name that's new, and you've got three years of process.
That'll be up to y'all to decide who-
Move them to the red part.
Who gets it. We can do that, you know, for, if they're willing to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can operate the existing scoreboards out there and just stay in control.
They do.
Yeah, absolutely.
They do.
That's a good question.
It is, it is. I was amazed at how, how kind of quick they went, you know, everybody that we've talked to. And that's one of the reasons why we kind of got the ball rolling, is we had such a time crunch on her to build the things and get them up by, by the midsummer when we're hoping to open. So that's why we kind of went ahead. But y'all do have the final say in who we actually put out there and who we don't.
Does the gentleman make a motion? We, in the first agreement for the San Antonio scoreboards, stock the middle of the basis described as Dr. Fleming, given the county management can operate it.
There's also a marketing agreement. Did you mean to propose, I meant, and then to-
You mean, or your chairman to complete the plan from Dr.?
Did you mean that way?
I meant that.
You said, I think. We have motion to second to what Chester's saying. Any discussion? What is your phone number, Tammy?
My phone number, eight-five-zero six-
Eight-five-zero?
Yes, sir.
That's one of some of my, here's six-five-six-eight-seven?
Four-zero-five-two, yep, that's my directory number. And then I think if you have part with our eight-hundred number-
It's on there.
There you go.
Thank you.
Go on.
Any other discussion? Lots of good discussion, good questions, gentlemen. Here goes a discussion, all in favor of the motion, see if I'm saying that.
I have opposed.
That motion passes. Tammy, thank you.
Thank you.
Seth, thank you for the hard work. And that will save us a bit of money and that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, quick question. The fields, or all the people that are naming the fields, set on the, being on baseball fields, corporate heads by the point of the ninth spot, the one where the ball field is inside, are there still questions?
Seth and I kind of preliminarily put those fields in, they have not been set out. Yeah, they have not been set out. So if you want to shuffle them, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Macon Bank would-
Macon Bank would like to have the field that they're on, the, they came out and actually did it.
Right, she's on there.
Roger.
Well, that answers the question. Macon Bank moves that, that leaves one of the baseball fields open.
That is, that is correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Tammy, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And we'll move rather quickly. That took a little bit of time, but it was important discussion. So let's try to move it again. They're coming to Tommy now. Go back to my comments, thirty-seven minutes ago. The Caterpillar thing, we say all that again, but we have become very aware of that situation, and we have some things going. It felt like it was appropriate, Tommy, of this discussions I had with Tommy, especially Tommy is in Chester, I don't think, you and I, I talked to Chester about this bridge. I don't think we necessarily vote. I think Tommy can do certain things, through his nature and the scope of his job. But in talking with me, as chairman, I really don't have the authority to give him direction from me at least.
I think he, I think he certainly needs to leave here, but it consists of a lot to have him do what he can do to help with this.
As long as you guys agree with what we've talked about. So Tommy, I think Mr. Chairman, I won't take a few minutes. Originally, we were going to EDC review in light of what's transpired the last few days. I just want to bring y'all an update on the Caterpillar situation. As most of you know, Thursday afternoon, early afternoon, CAT informed their employees that they were going to be closing their Franklin and Ticoa facilities, consolidating those facilities in Ableton, I believe, Illinois. That came as a shock, not only to the employees, but the whole community. We had had discussions with CAT and kept up with on a regular basis about workforce training. As a matter of fact, the last meeting we had with them was back in October, where Governor McCorry's one thousand visits, one hundred days. And we discussed workforce issues and opportunities for them. Had no, had no indication at all that this was in their plate. Obviously, Thursday afternoon was the first time we heard that, and the whole CAT had heard of it. After, after Kevin and I spoke, I received a call from Jan Moore, who's the southeastern manager of the governmental affairs of Caterpillar, confirming that. And so we decided we better, we better get a move on pretty quick. Friday afternoon, Tom was secretary, assistant secretary of the avenue, still out of Department of Commerce, informed of the situation, brought in the governor's office and set us into the conversation, as well as the vision of workforce solutions, to look at possible options moving forward. The result of that is tomorrow in Raleigh, there'll be a meeting with Secretary Sciveria, Commerce Secretary, Susan Linkwood of the governor's office, also Assistant Secretary Mitchell and Danny Gerlach, government, to explore options, not only, not only the short term, but in the long term. So that meeting will take place in the morning. That's a close meeting, but Secretary Mitchell said that she will be speaking with us as soon as, as soon as that meeting's over. Let us know where they are with that. In addition, we reached out to CAT's government governmental affairs contact in Illinois to see, see what options we have moving forward, both short term and long term. At this point, I think it's fair to say we're just assessing the situation and development of the county before. There's a lot at play in this, and our options are somewhat limited, but we're going to explore what are options, you know, to make sure that not only we can use up the ceiling to keep those people gambling for good jobs. In time, we also talked to President of North House Association, Ken Fisher, what is going to be on the table. Spoke with Richard Beal, head of that organization, and we made those folks aware of this, of not getting, just to be realistic, it's private business, making a private decision. I'm not sure how much you know, but if we, if we can have influence, then we do that. And I think that's important. Yeah, and to go back to Chester's point, I'll do what I, do what I can do and come back to y'all and report.
I think in a nutshell, he understands very well what his focus is, and he will go out and try to put together the best representation we can and bring that back.
We have a general consensus, the board were agreeing with that. I see they're heading off to the red flag, which is, and consent, receiving this.
I'm going to tell the board, though, I'll be along with her this Friday, in the top of the turn, anything I can, I'm sure we can get him to say, if you're not, Secretary will need to.
And we have to-
And we're going to handle it, too, and we're going to handle it.
And we have to put in, we have to then talk to Governor, Governor and to the Secretary of Commerce, and that they both may be available to meet on Friday. So if so, we may ask Tommy to go down and Ronnie, since you're there.
Sounds good.
What do you have to do?
Whatever handles.
Anything, Seth?
That's right.
Well, we're getting some information. I had to step out for a second. We're putting together information, the number of jobs, the salaries of jobs, and all that whole kind of energy.
How many jobs, we're pretty sure, Tommy, how many jobs are actually going to be left at Caterpillar? Do you have that solid number?
Well, the total number between Franklin and Caterpillar is two-seventy-five, and the best stuff is to ascertain what place I'm in, it's about a hundred here.
You won't buy that with the most version of the whole reward that's going to be.
And also, you know, this isn't, this isn't a lucky track out in the middle of the night, but you're on the next one, and this is going to transpire, making those decisions. I anticipate, from what I've heard, working, really, really, the stance that they're actually in place, that would be more important. Any questions to Tom? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Manager, I know we sort of skipped your interview, if you have anything to add there, or we'll move into-
I can do a short, new year review, this is where we are in terms of projects and what we're going to have.
Absolutely.
We have to finance this.
Mr. Chairman, I would, man. Looking back at this past fiscal year, it has been a busy year. And this same time last year, we sat around the table and we discussed our goals and what we wanted to accomplish in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. I think at that meeting, it was made clear by the board that they recognized the high level of service that Macon County employees and departments provide to the citizens of this county. Furthermore, I think it was made clear that you wish for that high level of service to continue. And as, you've made clear, too, that no tax rate increase was, was going to be put in place, so we continue to provide this service at the same funding levels. Also, we recognized at this meeting, we wanted to stabilize our fund balance as we prepared for the uncertainty that would accompany the revaluation that was taking place, and we're finalizing now. Taking these directives, administration and department heads went back and presented you with budget of $45,700,000. That was approximately 3.4% less than the original budget from the previous year. The fund balance position was stabilized, beginning in eleven, twelve, through thirteen, fourteen. Our fund balance position had declined by nine percent, which means 33%. As of June 30th, 2014, our fund balance is 34%. So we feel that we have achieved that goal of stabilizing the fund balance position. We've maintained an A-plus credit rating, and most importantly, we remain committed to providing the citizens of Macon County with the most efficient and effective services possible. We faced many challenges so far this fiscal year. The first one being the revaluation. If you'll recall, last year at this same time, Mr. Lightner had came before us and notified us that we could see up to a 20% decrease in the tax base, $2 billion, which would lend us our tax rate now at .279 per $100 of assessed value. If we used that same revenue, that would have taken the tax rate up to .355 per $100 of assessed value. As the economy has continued to improve, we saw our sales tax revenue up from this time last year by about eight percent. Our building permits in Macon County, this time last year, I think, jagged by about 48%. As we see this economy continue to improve, combined with the hard work of the men and women in the tax office, and Mr. Lightner spoke to the board a couple nights ago, that by doing this in-house, has saved the county approximately $1 million right off the top by conducting this review appraisal in-house rather than outsourcing it to a third party. We were able to see a tax base decline of 1.3 billion, 14.5%. So with that new tax base of eight point, of 8.057 billion, that means that under the current, if we say we're going to need the same amount of revenue next year as this year, and we're revenue neutral, which is a term you've heard used so much lately, the tax rate would only have to rise to .33 per $100 of assessed value. And if you look around and you ask yourself, well, where does that put us regionally? Where does that put us statewide? The tax rate at .33, if you look around our region, the average tax rate for the seven counties that we're a part of in the southwestern commission is .39 per $100 of assessed value. If you want to expand that scope and look at all the counties in the state, the average tax rate for all the counties in the state is $1.10 cent per $100 of assessed value.
Orange County's about $1.10.
Right. So, so still and yet, again, the notices have went out, and we are finishing up in the final stages of reevaluation, have done an excellent job. While it was a decline in the tax base, it wasn't a decline as significant as we had originally expected. Insurance was another issue that I had brought forth in, in the budget message last year. And since then, we have worked diligently. Our county staff has established a work group made up of not only administration, but county employees, working alongside our insurance broker to address the problems that we are seeing in our insurance fund. And just to highlight that, the insurance fund is defined by our audit, is to act like a fund in the private sector. In other words, by design, that insurance fund should make money. There's two sorts, there's two sources of revenue primarily going into that fund, county contribution and employee contribution. And out of that, you pay the claims, the prescription costs, and administrative costs. So since 2009, under the current rates we have in place and the current plan that we offer, our net position, which acts as a fund balance for this insurance reserve account, has declined by 70%, or an average of $820,000 per year. And so moving into fiscal year 14 and 15, as we projected out, we said, hey, there's not enough in this insurance reserve fund for us to continue with this plan through fiscal year 15, 16. So as we saw that, we knew it was imperative that we begin to make changes now. And as the committee continues to work and get the numbers together, we will have a product to bring back before the board sometime in the near future. And we have been keeping all employees in the organization aware of what has been going on and being discussed with this insurance review committee by way of an email. We've established an email network where we send our minutes and the charts we've been discussing, the diagrams we've been discussing, out to all the employees, and they can provide us feedback to- To, they can provide us back with feedback through that same network. And we have taken that feedback, incorporated into our committee discussions, and we feel that at the end of the day, we will still have an insurance product that we offer the employees of Macon County that is high quality and affordable. We continued in this budget to focus our funding on priority areas. Schools, if you will look at the makeup of our budget, at historic week, been a top priority for Macon County Board of Commissioners. This year, we held the operating expenses to thirteen and fourteen-year old, year levels for the Macon County Public Schools at seven point three million. We added an additional one hundred thousand dollars to the capital outlay for the schools, bringing this total to around two hundred thousand dollars. And also, we, we voted mid-year to appropriate an additional twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars to the schools for fixing the batting cages at the ladies' softball field. We continue to support our community college in their efforts to expand their campus, and we're having discussions right now resulting from a master plan that the board also assisted Southwestern Community College with funding. And we're currently still in discussions on seeing how we can make some of the things in that, that plan come to fruition. We also focused on public safety, which has historically, as it makes up about twenty-two percent of our budget, been a priority area for the, for the Board of Commissioners as well. Our EMS was able to add additional staff, which increased their coverage. There are still funds in this budget for an additional ambulance if needed. In the Sheriff's Department, with the support of the Board of Commissioners, we are now able to say that an SRO is at every school in Macon County to watch out for the students at that school. Many projects have, have continued to be underway, and we're embarking on many new projects as well in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. Three point three million dollar Parker Meadows Recreation Project, which we have just got done discussing, is making headway. We expect that to be finished in the summer of two thousand and fifteen. And not only are we in the construction phase, where we also have members of the Economic Development Staff, Recreation Staff, members of the Little League Board, the, and travel leagues, our Recreation Board, have all came together and formed a committee to start discussing, how are we going to market the Parker Meadows Recreation Park? But more importantly, how are we going to market that and keep our local leagues in, in mind and make sure that they, that their, their schedules fit in with the travel ball tournaments that we will be marketing to? So as, as that committee continues to meet, we're making very good progress, and it looks like that we will be able to, to have some tournaments scheduled and bring some people in here in two thousand and fifteen. The board also increased funding to the Highlands Recreation by five thousand dollars, bringing that total to half a million. So we have, we've really focused on recreation and making, making, improving the quality of life, not only our citizens, but pursuing new economic development alternatives in things such as the Parker Meadows Recreation Park. Our landfill expansion is another project that we recently embarked on. We're currently in the due diligence phase, of looking at two parcels of property that if purchased would add ten acres onto the landfill. This would add an additional sixty years of life to the landfill, and it would give citizens an estimated fifty-one million dollars in savings over the life of the landfill when compared to shipping and tipping from a convenience center. We have also recently discussed the county service area that was brought up at the last meeting, and we're continuing to move forward on that project. That's, that would be an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue to Macon County in here. And this hundred and sixty thousand dollars is not additional revenue. It is, as Commissioner Tate alluded to at the last meeting, it's making us hold to the services that we provide to these three hundred and twenty-two parcels in Jackson County. These parcels are a total of about four hundred and fifty-five million dollars in tax base. And from these three hundred and twenty-two parcels, Jackson County receives approximately one point two million dollars in revenue, being the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that, that we will be discussing with Jackson County is thirteen percent of that amount. The, yeah. The, along with the projects and, and the, the internal things like the insurance and the rebound that we've been dealing with, what's important to, to note more than anything is that our departments continue to do great work. Our Health Department was recognized nationally, our DSS Department, when implementing the NCFAST system for benefit disbursement or entitlement disbursement has remained at the top of the state in terms of percentage of backlog. And this has been a, this has created tremendous hardships for counties across the state as they try to implement this program. But thankfully, under the direction of Ms. Jane Kenzie, her and her staff have been able to implement this program successfully, and they've done a great job. And not just those two departments, but all departments. We've, we've, all departments have taken measures to reduce costs. The Sheriff's Department have worked with the Sheriff's Department as we pursue inmate insurance. We're now pursuing an, an alternative means of involuntary commitment transport that we feel will give us significant savings. Building inspections Department consolidated a position in terms of to free up some money there. Our IT Department reduced their budget, and they continue to provide us internally with excellent service. The maintenance staff, if we had a dollar for every, if we had a nickel for every dollar the maintenance staff saved us, we could add no telling how much back to the fund balance, because they really do save us a lot of money, and they do a great job. And all departments, down there, as we carry out the goals of the board and look forward to, to going into next year's budget and, and taking, taking the same challenges and embracing. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Question, Jim? Derek, I'm just saying, behalf of the board, I think I just went through everybody up here. Your first year, you've not, you've not done a good job, you've done a great job as county manager, and carried out the expectations of the board, and in most cases, I think, we see. When we started, I told you privately that I had two things. You had one thing working for you, and one thing working against you. The thing that worked against you was your age and experience. The thing that was working for you was your age and experience, that you didn't have any preconceived notions, but you've taken, I think you've taken, taken that path, I suspect, or what you've done. I think, I believe I echo. Thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir. I'm going to move straight into the financial review. Thank you, Mayor.
Are you a welcome.
Nice to be here. Thank you for having me. As we do every year, I just have to give the board a little bit of an update of where we are financially. So we'll talk a little bit about sales tax, ad loring tax, our revenues, expenditures, and then debt service. So first of all, let's take a look at our sales tax. These charts compare last fiscal year to this fiscal year, same time period. And just a reminder, the sales tax, there is a three-month lag. So these slides represent July, August, September, and October retail sales. So as you can see, this year, we're at thirty-seven point four percent of budget. And again, you know, that's a great percentage because we're, we're only a, a third of the way there, so we're a little, a little above budget. As compared to last year, we were at thirty-six point seven percent same time period.
Well, if you back, back up one second. What's, what's the percentage increase from this seven point three to seven point seven?
We're going to talk about that on the next slide.
Okay.
For actuals.
All right.
Yeah, the, the big bars on there, I can mention that, those represent budget for the whole year, seven point three versus seven point seven. And of course, the smaller blue bars represent actuals for the first four months. But to answer your question, the next slide looks at, okay, if we take, we actually received two point seven million for the first four months of last year, and we've received two point nine million this year. So that is a seven point seven two percent increase over prior year, which is a great thing. And the last email that I got for the October retail sales from Rebecca Troutman had said that, you know, statewide, sales tax for the month of October were up substantially. And the reason, one of the main reasons is the state, of course, Amazon for almost a year now has started collecting and remitting state of North Carolina sales tax. And that has helped our tax base tremendously. And then the other part, you know, just varies from region to region. Our percentage, of course, isn't as great as some of the other regions, but, you know, for us.
Remind us, Mr. Mayor, when you did your revenue projections, did you project a three percent increase?
Two point three, two percent.
Two point three, two. So this actual, so it's extended that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So just a what-if scenario, and to me, you know, I'm conservative, so I don't want to get too excited, you know? Here we are, four months, out of twelve months, you know, we're at seven point seven two percent, and I only budgeted two point three, two percent. But if this growth were to continue, you know, for the whole entire fiscal year, if we experienced, you know, roughly seven point seven two percent growth for the whole twelve month period, then we would realize an additional four hundred and eighty-nine thousand of revenue per current year. Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand of that would belong to the general fund, and the remaining ninety-one thousand would go to the school's capital fund.
That's, oh, I'm under.
That's above and beyond what was budgeted. Yes. That would be three hundred and ninety-seven thousand above what was budgeted. But again, I don't know, you know, you don't, you don't want to count your chickens before that.
Thank you.
But, I mean, it's a positive sign, because if you stop and think, we don't even have Christmas sale, you know? This is just July through October, retail sales.
Well, if you were to be true, if you were to project a one percent, the actual, then it would, you'd be sweating a little bit.
Right, right. So, and just to remind you of how the sales tax structure, Article Four, Articles Forty and Forty-two, the general fund doesn't get to retain all of that money. Article Forty is split between seventy percent general fund and thirty percent goes to schools, that you have to use it for schools' capital purposes, whether it be, you know, to fund construction directly or fund the debt service payments for school construction. And then the Article Forty-two, the general fund keeps forty percent of it, and then sixty, the other sixty percent has to get transferred to the school's capital fund, again, for the same purpose of either directly funding school construction or making principal and interest payments for school construction. So just a reminder there. So that's why I made the point.
Can that one be used for debt set up?
Yes, we use that currently for our debt payments. Yes, sir. So I just wanted to remind you of that, and that's why I said it the way I did, that, you know, part of the money would be the general fund, part would be to that school's capital reserve fund. Any questions, comments on that? So again, we're looking good. Just got to keep our fingers crossed that, you know, and like I said, that's what's hard about this, is that three-month lag. So it's really hard to project, you know? There's such that lag, but.
You should probably beat that lag, Lori.
No, I didn't. So this slide takes a look at our general fund revenues. I'm sorry, got ahead myself. General fund, property and motor vehicle taxes. And as you can see, we're on target this year. We're at eighty-three point eight percent collected of budget. We were at that same point last year. You know, so Richard and his folks are, are doing a great job, as they always do, in collecting our taxes. So I think we should be right on target, you know, to achieve what we had budgeted for our property and ad loring, or, sorry, property and motor vehicle taxes. Any questions or comments on that slide? Okay. Now revenues. Our budget, this, this slide represents the, the darker blue columns are our budget as amended through December thirty-first. So at the beginning of the presentation, Derek, what was it, forty-five point seven million?
Forty-five seven million.
Yeah, we started, of course, the year at forty-five seven. Of course, we always have budget amendments, most of the time it's just to roll things forward from prior year. So our current budget is at forty-five point nine million. We have collected sixty-two percent of that revenue, so we're, you know, definitely well ahead of track, which is good. And compared to last year, we were at sixty percent same time period. So again, we're, you know, right on target as far as revenue collections go, shouldn't have any issues there. And of course, the two biggest sources of this revenue are your sales tax and your property tax.
Even though it's early, but any objective two-point, where you said, increase from one year to the next, last fiscal year, this fiscal year, any idea of what that budget reflects?
On the sales tax.
On the sales tax.
Um, we haven't, we rely a lot on our fearless forecast, you know, from the, the NCACC. Of course, they haven't put that out yet. But I would imagine their forecast would probably, probably be pretty good, but.
Then we have to check.
From my perspective, you know, you know, yes, I budgeted two point three, we're at seven point seven, so we're ahead. So even if we bumped that up some, I'd still, you know, be kind of cautious, because I think Amazon is finally, you know, with them charge on sales tax, you know what I mean? I don't think we're going to experience that kind of growth next year. I could be wrong, but.
The Marketplace Finance Act, it's really, it's got some momentum. Let me see if it does, if that does kick in, it would be potential, as I can say. Oh, fuck, fuck you.
Yep, no, it's like, close it. But we could, I mean, we're definitely, you know, definitely budget growth on top of current budget moving into next year. It's just a little too soon to tell how much grew. Any more questions, comments? So our next slide is our expenditures for the general fund. And again, this is the first six months of the fiscal year. We're at forty-two point three percent spent, which is great. You know, we're halfway through the year. You would normally, you know, give or take, you'd be at fifty percent. So we're, we're well under that. So again, we don't expect any, you know, big, big pickups or disasters that would, that would ruin us, you know, by year end to make us over budget. All right. This one's always a hot topic of discussion, you know, how much debt does Macon County have? This slide shows, the first column represents this current year's debt payments for principal and interest. So as you can see, we're at a little over five million for current year. Moving into next fiscal year, that number drops to almost four point four million. So that is a six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar decrease in our debt payments.
Just clarification, where this, this is not a debt, it's actually a payment.
Yeah, it's debt, it's principal and interest debt payments by fiscal year. Yeah, our total debt, our total payments, if you added all these bar together, it's like forty-five point seven million, just round it. But yes, each, each bar just represents the principal interest per fiscal year that we have to pay out, that we're obligated to currently.
What's our total?
Total debt, forty-five point seven. And of course.
And it can be a payment directly to the school?
Eighty, eighty-five percent of it is school debt, yes. And of course, after we make these, we've made a lot of these payments, of course, in fiscal fifteen, so we'll have five million rolling off the books. Assuming we didn't enter into new debt, you know, then we'd be at like forty point seven million, that was with principal and interest.
Lori, your previous years were higher than this, you know, the show, two thousand and fifteen. Is that correct? Principal net payment higher.
Yes, yes, it was higher.
Two reasons? I mean, this is a trend, a downward trend.
Right. Well, there's two reasons. One, you're paying your debt down, and two, we said, if we lowered our interest rates, we retired some debt, and we lowered our interest rates when we lowered five percent to two.
Right, we saved, we saved a substantial amount of money by refinancing.
And the Q's add up, which is, you know, fifty, thirty, twenty.
Yeah. A lot of the Q's add at zero. The, the Nana Hala Q's add is actually at one point one percent net, and then the Holland's Q's add is zero. And then the Q's add is, and that's, I don't think, a point four eight percent, if I remember that correctly.
Well, let's just back that way. Back in three, four years ago, when I came on board, I asked what our debt was, did we stick those, about sixty, so we paid off roughly three million dollars in debt in the past three, four years, a little rough, but, is it?
That sounds about right. I can't remember.
Yeah. I mean, that's a downward. So we're down within significantly more debt.
Yeah, and the point too is like, we haven't incurred, we haven't taken on a lot of additional debt in the last few years. So like I said, we refinanced, which saved money. We've paid off existing debt and we haven't entered into a great deal of debt.
What we had is Parker Meadows. And the Highlands QZA. And the technology.
Yeah, the school technology and then the ventilators, which was $374,000 small. Yeah, those are the new projects we've had. It was 1.5 million, Highlands QZA, 1.5 million, Parker Meadows. Or was it 1.8? 1.8, sorry, 1.8.
But I think some more to note that you looked at is that we've paid off more debt than we...
Yes, definitely, yes.
Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And your debt money, Paul, is a problem.
The school debt or just debt in general? Debt in general, which is majority school debt. And actually, my last slide will cover that. And like you said, it comes from lottery funds. The school capital reserve fund money is used to pay debt. Then we have federal subsidy rebates on the, one of the QZAs and the QSCAs.
And Gary, one of the things that we discussed this a few minutes out of hand of nature, legislative goals, we had a meeting, did you know, last week? One of the things that we're pushing for is the return of the 40% of the lottery money to be returned to schools, which that would be...
That would be substantial for us.
We're at less than 20%, so if that were restored to 40%, and understand, that's no new money, that's just money coming back from the state.
Right, we often be getting anyways, correct.
So if we could do that, then it's going to significantly improve our foundation. Hopefully, we are an active business.
Because our current lottery fund budget is like $306,000. So we should probably be getting more like $600.
Right.
So, yeah, that would be a great help if those funds could be restored. Yes, the second piece. That comes from sales tax. Article 40, we have to take, Article 40, we have to take 30% of that money and put it in a special fund called the schools' capital fund, reserve fund. And then Article 42, we have to take 60% of that movement over there. And then what we do with that money as a county is we use that, we transfer that all over to our debt service fund to pay our school debt down.
And look, Lori, Gary, just to bring you, the debt that we have right now would be primarily, would be Iowa Elementary, Mountview 5-6 school. And with the Highlands, June, is it still on there?
No, we've paid that off.
It's paid off.
We've got the Sanders Owens property. I'm not sure which school that sits on.
That's what I do that.
Okay. 5-6 school in East Franklin, Iowa, QZA for East Franklin, Nana Hala school, QZA, school computer equipment, Highlands QZA, and then the Series 2004 COPS, and that is the school. It was a Series 2004 COPS issue. COPS stands for certificates of participation. And of course, that was prior to my time. But back in 2004, the county took several loans that it had at the time and consolidated them and was able to get a lower effective interest rate. So of that consolidation back in 2004, about 75% of that debt belonged to schools at the time. And I apologize, I don't have that detail of which schools it covered, but it was about 75% of that.
That would have been Southmacon, South R2J, under...
And that's the one that's paying off in current year. So that's the biggest chunk of why our debts, when we go down, $665,000. Yeah. And like I had listed earlier, that leaves us with Sanders Owens property, the 5-6 school in East Franklin, Iowa, QZA for East Franklin, Nana Hala QZA, the school computer equipment, the Highlands QZA. Those will be the ones left on the books after we finish this fiscal year '15.
Any questions? So am I right, Lori, in saying that in this year, in this year's budget, we're about 12% ratio debt to budget?
$5 million versus $45.
That's something on the table. So on the credit score, that'd be...
Yeah, yeah.
And the thing from budgetary standpoint, the thing that we need to look at is from this year to next year, we have about 700, we're about 700...
665, rolling off.
665 rolling off of paying interest.
Correct, principal and interest.
That would be a positive.
The next slide, this has been brought up in the past, so I thought I would do a slide just on school debt only. So just to make sure you're clear, the slide we just looked at was the county's total general fund debt, which included school debt, okay? And that was the big number, which I said about 85% was school debt. This slide here just pulls out the school debt only. So you can see out of our current year, of the $5 million in debt, 4.1 million of that is attributable to the schools. And so the other things to note here, looking at school debt only, it goes from 4.1 down to 3.6 roughly for next year, or a decrease of $554,000 that is directly attributable to school debt.
And again, leaves you principal and interest payments required.
Yes, required in each fiscal year, yes, just like the previous slide. So is everyone following what I did? First one was total, this just pulls out school debt only. So with that being said, so we know that our debt's decreasing $665,000 between this fiscal year and next. $554,000 of that is attributable to school debt rolling off. But my last slide is just to show that moving into fiscal '16, here are our revenue sources for school debt. Lottery funds, $306,000. Nana Hala subsidy, $59,000. And again, this is where, Nana Hala was the QZA, where we locked in a high interest rate, but then every year, twice a year, I have to send a rebate form to the federal government, who, by the way, has decreased our subsidy for now the past three fiscal years, I believe, at least two. So that has been reduced by, I think, 7.2%. And then the Iowa Valley subsidy, same kind of deal, except for QZA. We locked in with the bank for a higher interest rate, but we get a subsidy rebate from the federal government, which makes our net effective interest rate there 0.48. And then transfer from the general fund. So it would, of course, in a perfect world, it would be great if we had enough lottery money, schools' capital reserve fund, which are those portions of Articles 40 and 42 that we're able to transfer over. And then the subsidies, you know, that that would cover our school debt, but of course, it doesn't. We're still going to have to rely on the general fund next year, you know, about $1.2 million, which is, you know, which is not abnormal. We've been, you know, not uncommon, we've been doing that. But just to point out that even though we have debt rolling off, school debt rolling off, we're still relying on basically, you know, tax revenues to cover the other piece of our school debt payments, an amount of about $1.2 million.
Who's ABC? ABC funds? They go for school debt?
No.
We don't get it.
It's very minimal what we get. I think we might get $12,000 a year.
And go get the general.
Just general fund revenue. But Mr. Shields, Mr. Shields, I hope this answers your question. Revenue sources for school debt. This shows, you know, the breakout of... And again, remember that schools' capital reserve fund is the monies for Article 40 and 42 that must be used for school capital purposes. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to add, sort of, I was sitting down there. Lori, you're doing outstanding job with our finances. I thought when we lost that on the subject, if we go back to Stonehenge County, we call it Gary's County. Yeah. Were you sliding those things? Lori, you've been amazing. You've done outstanding job with our, our compliments to your staff. I'm sure you give long credit to.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Thank you for moving quickly. We're getting back closer to, our time's running. Mr. Mayor, you have your proposed county budget for, you have the budget calendar for this year.
Yes, sir. I will, I'll pass it out here. It's still, it's still warm. I had to go train it real quick. This is basically the same, the same format as last year. We've followed for many years. We presented with this today. Our preliminary budget meeting or our budget kickoff for department heads, if you will, will be on February 16th. After we do that kickoff with the department heads, they will have until March 23rd to complete their line item budget. And they will return the hard copy request and theirs to the finance office. The finance office will then take those, compile them, and print the budget for my review on March 30th. The, after that, after that budget's been printed, I will then go and go through that budget and each department's request. And we'll have a series of meetings beginning April 6th, lasting through April 17th, where I will sit down as needed with department heads to further discuss any items in their budget. The outside agencies, including the schools, we've held April 15th as the date for a long time now that they submit their budget requests in. So they're familiar with that and we'll, of course, make them aware of it. May 12th is when I'll present to the board the recommended budget with the budget message. It will be distributed to department heads and posted on the county webpage following my presentation to the board. May 13th, we'll begin our work sessions with the board of commissioners. Last year, we were able to have one work session. I think we, in about two hours, was all it took. This year, we do have some issues that I will need to sit down and explain the process and such as our insurance and kind of what's going on, what to expect. So I do think that something like that, like the health insurance, would need an entire work session dedicated to discussing just that and other issues. Well, if we have to, to meet with the school board like we usually do, and then it would just, we will, we'll just kind of hold off. And as that time gets closer, we'll set, set the dates and times of those specific work sessions that we will need from May 13th until June 9th, when there will be a public hearing on the budget. And then June 16th, the board will adopt the fiscal year '15, '16 budget. So does anybody have any questions or is there any points of clarification on there that are needed? Any questions? I think we will. Thank you.
That one, we're going to go over this, but I do have a few thoughts and comments on this year's budget personally.
I think, I think we do have a little time left here to talk about our goals and expectations for the year. Okay, the appropriate. We'll go ahead and make up some time here. As far as the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners legislative goals, Ryan and I were both very involved in that process. Run that how that works. All county commissioners boards across the state, all county commissioners, which are our 530 county commissioners in the state, roughly five per county, somehow seven, can submit legislative goals. Those are things that we think the legislature should do or things that we think legislature shouldn't do in some cases. Start out with 2, 300, probably.
We start out this year to 300.
Well, that was narrowed down to committee to about 46 or 47. We met last Thursday, Friday. Mr. Shields, I myself, which that meeting as well, as our county manager, we worked for the better part of two days in discussing all these goals. We wound up narrowing those down to five. And the reason that we did that is because you can have 45 goals, but you can effectively lobby the legislature for 45 things. It just doesn't work that way. So if you narrow down your top five, historically, Association of County Commissioners have been very successful. Ryan and I probably approached probably 80 to 90% success rate, would you say? And I'll mention two of the goals, Ryan, a big one for this. The one I mentioned you need to go, so I won't talk a lot about it, is we are lobbying legislature for the return of the lottery funds when they first set up the North Carolina Lottery. It was sold to the public on the fact that 40% would be returned to local school systems. And that has not happened. It's 17% this year. So it not only hurts Macon County, it hurts Mecklenburg County, Wacon County, Orange County, and all the rest of us. So we're on the same page. And that was out of the 300 that were submitted, that was in the top five. Another that I mentioned is that we ask for no unfunded mandates. Don't come to us and say, hey, you got to do this, you got to do that, and not send money. If you tell us we got to do it, we want to see a check, a bribe, to pay for it. Does that make sense to you?
Oh, it is.
So we've asked very loud and very clear that that's what we want, that's what we expect. And then Ryan, you were handling it today.
Well, the main topic at last day of those conferences, of course, is medical. And what we're looking for, it was a device, it's very political. And you got, do we do the expansion of North Carolina? Do we don't do the expansion of North Carolina? You have the governor who worked through some part of it, and that state who don't. So we work very hard to come up with some language. And here's why. If you remember back, now almost five years ago, we had a Medicaid swap. We swapped the highest-end sales tax and the state will assume the Medicaid responsibility, which has meant millions to our county, millions across the state. Well, they can undo that, too. And so getting that in mind, during our discussions, and we had a lot of discussion, a lot of phones to our, we came up with some different language. And that language is basically that we support the state's efforts in the Medicaid in whatever form that they come up with and efforts to provide insurance to all citizens. That's going to be our goal to work with and work with the state because that's, we just didn't want to make a spotlight. We still don't, right, to the Medicaid, to the Medicaid swap. You now have a whole new legislative there, 170, who wasn't there when this was passed. And we just assumed they did discuss that because it has been threatened in the past and we can always undo that. If they do, you're looking at substantial tax rate increases for our citizens. So that was the first thing. And another thing that Kevin alluded to, of course, is unfunded mandates and then the transportation, so it always comes up. We see many changes in the transportation. More and more things going to seem like the contract. We do have a TPC meeting Monday at 5:00. We're not able to spend on the transportation part of it. There's just concerns about where the long session begins, about the school. And that's one of the, so that's the fight we're in on. We left 42, 41 in the goals we're working with, and then helping on top of those two. And we continue that journey. And so, but I appreciate not only the ones from this board who attended, we have the largest community from the West ever. Every county was well represented except for Platteville. That's the first time that's ever happened. So we appreciate that. Appreciate Mr. Shields going to Nick and finding it. It's on his first board, we have what he probably wants. That's what I feel. So we had a good, it was a good conference, it was well-handled. And another one I was bringing up speed on is the sixth legislation to repeal the statutory authority that allows the local school boards to file suit against the county board of county commissioners, IAU McCann. If you don't know what happened, Union Canyon lived at the region. They sued and won the case, $90 million, McCann. That's now before the appeals. We just think unless they have tax rate authority, that, that a board of education. When they got in front of the jury, it started out at $8 million.
I was going to say, it could have been settled for $8 million. The case, they turned it to $90 million.
And it's a $90 million and another amount, that's going forward. And it's a ninety million dollar and another amount, that's going forward. But the advantage we have, when you go to the meeting, you'll find out that we just have a relationship with this new board that's abnormal.
Good, actually.
Good abnormal. We, we have a great relationship with them and it's very important that's maintained.
Actually, it's funny that we had, last year in the sort of county official too, we had counties wanting to have goals about how you handle lawsuits between school boards and county commissioners and this kind of thing. And, and we actually said to them, we did something sort of crazy back home. We actually sit down and talk to them and see if we can work things out and they sure looked at it like.
That's a knowledge.
They don't do that that easily.
They don't never meet. They don't, so, so we're very blessed and we have a good relationship with the school board and, uh, and so the other one is the tax and finance and that's the C legislation to renew the study, the compensation of the counties properly acquired by the state renewed from the abnormal tax base. And that's happened across the state. Not so much here, but they're doing it while the state acquires property or some sovereign nation that's acquired property. And immediately that comes off the taxes, the abnormal tax base.
I issue command.
So, so, uh, but the state can do the same thing. Any, any property they buy that the state acquires comes off of our tax base and it's a, not a switch for us right now, but it could happen here, but for our neighbors it's a figure across the state. So, uh, and level is support A D M growth projections as part of the budget. That's average, average data membership. That's where all the money comes from, the head, uh, the school boards is Kerry and, and Gary and Kevin. So there's a lot of things going on that, uh, we go back Friday this week, we do meet with some of those folks and then we'll have our legislative goals when we go all the way through the meeting. So, but we have a, you know, we do have a good relationship with our government and legislative, our arms as well. They allow you to do that. So.
We'll keep working. Thank you. Thank you. We'll pass. Thank you. Got you back on the, back on schedule. Mr. Springer with you, Captain. We have a part of schedule for two o'clock. So welcome, Mr. Springer.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I was asked to come today to present on some of the changes or challenges that we're facing in this year's budget and next year's budget. And this is not because we were asked to come for our health meeting. Commissioner Hayden probably won't be able to speak to any of these points, I don't think, because we have not taken to the board health yet. It's gonna be part of the budget process when we take it forward to them. And again, I was, I was asked by Derek to come today and present that. And I want to tell you upfront that we already met with Derek and Lori to have some conversations. If you flip to the second page there where it starts off with projected increases in revenue and expenses and FY fifteen and sixteen and read the line under that, this includes no new county dollar. You're not asking for county money. We are asking for some adjustments in this year's budget and next year's budget. This year's will do through the general budget process, through a budget amendment that you'll receive probably in the next month or so, we hope, when we receive the check from the state. So we're waiting on that. But again, no new county money. Basically for several years now, uh, the last three, we've had some significant additions to our Medicaid cost settlement that we get at the end of the year. And our finance person, Tommy Hodgins, has worked very hard to make it so that we can receive those funds and expend those funds in the year there are. And then we haven't been able to do that until this year. In past years, we've always earned a little bit of additional money, maybe ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars. We've always had to ask to carry it forward to the next fiscal year to spend. And Medicaid cost settlement dollars can't be used to supplant any county money that's already projected into a budget. So we, we've had to carry it forward. So what we're gonna ask in this is that we start next fiscal year actually budgeting the full amount. Because in the last two years, we've received in the range of two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more a year in Medicaid cost settlement. And that's due to some changes they made at federal level in what we can and can't claim in Medicaid cost settlement. But we'd like to start trying to budget that to plan for rather than planning for the last month and a half of the fiscal year, having to carry money forward and doing a lot of one-time purchases with it. We'd rather do things that can provide more services to the citizens of the county. Uh, and one of those things includes some changes in clinical services which will generate hopefully some additional dollars in our general revenue funds. If you flip to the next page, FY fourteen earned, last year we earned four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. We only budgeted two hundred and twelve. We received from the state four hundred and forty-nine, nine twenty. And the reason there's a difference between the four ninety-nine to four forty-nine is the federal government or, excuse me, the state BMA holds on to ten percent of our cost settlement until they can reconcile the cost settlement. And we've now got about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars sitting there that they have yet to reconcile for us. And that's a statewide issue. It's not just us. They haven't reconciled with a single health department on their ten percent holdback. Again, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-one is what we budgeted. Received two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in addition to that that you, uh, this board approved for us to spend on one-time expenses and on some recurring expenses as long as we continue to earn the Medicaid revenue to cover those services. If you flip to the next one.
Long discussion we had and you and I have had. You know, to go back and adequately fund local health departments. The junior secretary says they must do that. Apparently they don't read that part of it. But I know the Health Directors Association and we did have long discussions. Those services are considered mandated by the state. They're not, as you took a cut last year. You have more mandates now than ever. So to reverse those and bring them, if the state, if we should be successful, if the legislature should decide to do that, I don't know if you had a number off the top of your head, but it would be substantial in, in our local health department, true.
We would also, it would depend on, on how the legislature tells the state to, to distribute those funds. They put it into the state and a lot of EPH to do it. It can be distributed based on their current formula, which was, I think, created in nineteen seventy-two. But we're hoping that the legislature will, will distribute it equally among, based on hopefully population numbers across the state. But it's, it's a, it's a Health Directors Association goal to adequately fund mandated services. It's also one of the County Commissioners Association unit services, I think, H H four, I think is what it was. And basically we've asked for thirty million dollars statewide to be added to the public health amounts. Over the past few years, they've cut five hundred million easy from our budget. But public health is a rounding error in the state budget. Of the state appropriation for unit services were point, point, point one-three percent. Point one-three percent. So every time they make a six percent change to everybody else, they make a six percent change to that point one-three percent. And we are dying on the mark.
If you can read that, but it's too real good.
Don't ask the state for it, put from it. On the next page, it starts off with FY sixteen, or excuse me, FY fifteen earned. We earned this year five hundred and nine thousand in Medicaid cost settlement. I signed the attestation statement the other day. Sometime within this next sixteen to ninety days, we should, we should receive our check from DMA. That check should be for four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So what we're asking this year is, is as soon as we have that check in our hand to budget in the FY sixteen budget, along with the two hundred and twelve million, two hundred and twelve thousand we've already done, to also increase that by a hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. And I'm gonna go through those things that we have in that request because that's what you're gonna see is the budget amendment from us and then to carry forward ninety-nine thousand, thirty-nine into next fiscal year. For this year, what we, we've, I don't know if you know, we've had a challenge since Dan last year retired and find a physician extender to replace him. So we've had to do a little bit of a salary increase and we can cover that out of this year's cost settlement. That should be somewhere around twelve thousand dollars for this year in additional salary expense. Again, this is not any county money involved in this at all. This is all based on the revenue that we earn. We want to add a part-time physician, eighty percent times to the health department. As you know, that we are considered a health provider shortage area here in Macon County. In our last few community health assessments, one of the top three priorities has been physician recruitment. And right now, we are being, as unfunded mandates go, the federal government changed the Title X rules for health departments. And now for every woman that we provide family planning services to that does not have a primary care provider, we now either have to provide primary care to that individual or we have to contract to the provider in the community to provide primary care to that individual. There's not gonna be many physicians in the community that can jump on board with that because as soon as they open up to see our family planning patients, they have to implement the sliding fee scale, the same as we do, that slides to zero and they have to implement it for all self-pay patients within their practice. So not many people are gonna jump on board. So we're thinking we're gonna have to provide that service. We actually have a contract physician right now that's working with us from the community here who's doing part-time hours, self-filling on the stands since Dan left until we have an extender. But that should cost us about fifty-one thousand dollars for, for six months. They had a full-time medical officer to support the physician to replace the vehicle. We, uh, we just transferred a vehicle to EMS, a van that they needed and, and we'd like to replace that vehicle. We're also making available, the sheriff's sitting in the back, I hope he doesn't shoot me. But, uh, but we have a vehicle that we're gonna transfer to, to the sheriff's department. I think at least the manager and I have had a conversation, Robbie and I have, for mental health transportation.
Give me anything you want.
And then, and then we want to purchase for our OB program that we've been doing, our maternal health program, an ultrasound machine. We're currently sending a lot of women out for ultrasounds. Every pregnant woman gets at least two minimum and it is costing us some money to do that. And we see an opportunity here with this Medicaid cost settlement money to do a one-time purchase of an ultrasound machine to allow us to do those in-house instead of referring out. And then there'd be an increase in operating supplies of about ten thousand dollars for the year for all of those things. The physician, the added physician time costs for the maintenance of the ultrasound machine and, and a little bit for our dental programs. And then we ask if we can carry the ninety-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars forward that we earned this year into next year to be expended on a couple of positions. I'm gonna talk about them here in a second.
Do you make them, do you have to be, to, to clarify? Do it on twenty thousand, one hundred and three dollars in physical contracted services? That, is that an overall increase in your budget?
Two hundred and twenty-one.
Am I hit it?
I'm looking. I'm on that page. Is it on the page I was just talking?
Yeah.
The FY fifteen earned?
Page five. Well, I think I'm on page here.
Your page here? I'm getting to that page right now. Yeah. Um, yeah, it is in the middle of the next page. All right. Next, that's for this year, for FY fifteen. And you're gonna see a budget amendment come as soon as we have the check in our hand for FY fifteen changes. FY sixteen, we're proposing to increase our revenue and expenses, both based on the cost settlement and to budget the full cost settlement so that we're not having to come before the board to spend that money at the end of the year, like I said before, and that when we receive the money, regardless of when we receive it during the year, it automatically just rolls into our Medicaid revenue fund and stop the craziness with the budget. But basically we're asking to increase the revenue budget by an additional two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that would be cost settlement dollars and forty thousand of that is what we're projecting from the increased position time as far as general clinic revenues or fees or earned from fees. We want to increase our expense budget by three hundred and forty-four thousand. That three hundred and forty-four includes the ninety-nine thousand dollar, ninety-nine thousand in carry forward money to continue the dental assistant position and the nurse position that we have in the clinic and to, and five thousand dollars that we want to continue in operating or equipment costs that we did for dental and for the clinic out of the last cost settlement fund. And then I think this is the one you were talking about, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and three dollar increase in contracted services. This would be to continue the full-time clerical position. And these are, something I left out on the last page I probably should have said is these are all contracted positions and as long as we're getting this money, we keep the positions. As soon as the money stops, the positions go away.
You were talking about the, the cost settlement money.
This is, this is cost settlement money.
So in other words, if, if as long, we're gonna budget that money and as long as we receive it, that's fine. That was gonna be a question I had, just as long as we don't use that money to go toward operating expenses that are gonna be there and then the, the money goes away and then that's gonna put that two hundred and thirty-seven back on the county. I, just to be sure that anything that we do with this two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, whenever that two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars goes, whatever we've done with it goes.
Correct. Whenever we're doing those. And that's why we're keeping all, we're not making these permanent benefited county positions. These will all be contracted positions, the same as we did last year and, and.
And we're non-recurring.
Non-recurring. Yeah. So, um, so the two hundred and twenty thousand would be in, in increasing contracted services. And we continue the full-time clerk position that we have. The part-time physician position, if you guys approve it in your, in the budget amendment we sent. To add a part-time dental hygienist to our child dental program, which will generate revenue. Don't know exactly how much and really don't have time to guesstimate on that to get here today. But we do have a backlog right now of about sixty days to get a child in the chair for cleaning at the schools. So we are trying our best, but we are gonna add and see what happens with a part-time dental hygienist. That is, that would not carry forward to twenty seventeen unless it can, unless it can fully support itself. Because we don't, when we move to twenty seventeen, in order to balance, that position would go away if it's not earning revenue at all. And then to add the full-time medical officer system or continue the full-time medical officer system position. And then the last part of that is to increase operating by twenty-five thousand dollars, which would hopefully be covered at that point by that, the physician time and generated general revenues. But again, no county money at this one. No county money. We're not asking for money. We're just asking to spend what we get.
Anything to you? Any questions?
No, sir. We, we, we contract directly with physicians, with professional staff, like physicians, nurses, clerk, staff, MOAs. We contract through a company out of Cary, which is actually a, uh, sub-organization under the Health Resources Association at state level. And they do have limited benefits. They can buy into healthcare. They do get vacation sick, they, they get PTO, but they can use it for vacation sick time. They do not do a retirement plan for those guys, no. And usually with physicians and professional staff, we try and contract with them because if we put them under the state personnel system, where they fall when it comes to salary, we'd never find one to hire. I mean, it just would happen. It's very difficult to find one in a small county. In a big county where salaries are significantly different in most cases, it's not as hard. Here, we, we just would be able to get.
Do you have a question that you see, can you, let's say that everything would be a main challenge to have like something's happened. A moving car, outbreak, major. And that's gonna come right back to the health department, your department. Or do you have funds?
No, sir.
That. So how would, how would we, if that should happen in our county, only extensive and, and it happened in one county, extensive outbreak like a moving car or something like that? What, are we, I know you're prepared to have.
We're dealing with an issue right now in one of the long-term care facilities that today is the last day hopefully and we're gonna be out of there. Most of the stuff is done in the staff from the department, staffing whatever it is that we're dealing with. And it takes away from clinical services that we provide directly within the community. We receive a very small amount of preparedness money from the state. Doesn't even pay for a full position in the building. There's no money set aside at the. There's no money set aside at the state level anywhere, including the Division of Public Health, to deal with any kind of outbreak or issue. It all falls back on the backs of the county. And it is, it is required for us to respond as a county, under the general statutes.
And that it says with immediate response.
With immediate response.
So I'm just saying that that, you know, maybe it may never happen, but it happened.
Not that we won't have that, but we, we have dealt with other things, we just-
Perhaps the county would just have to sit down with the county and say, look, you've got three hundred kids, four hundred kids, you've got eighty-nine away, you just have to deal with it.
We just have to deal with it, and it can cost anywhere from almost nothing, just like this one, cost us three hundred and ninety.
The same, you'd have a fund, if you had a fund, you could deploy it, and that would have gone away in 2006.
I was going to say, yeah, that's been, yeah, I was going to say about ten years, but yeah, there is no funding anymore.
Okay.
No money set aside. We used to have a little bit of a, a small cushion that we kept in the health department budget here, under Sam Greenwood, it was about between six and ten thousand dollars, in case that we just set aside and never spent, and that, we did away with about three years ago.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jim, also, Jamie Peeter, operations section administrator, thank you, Jamie, here.
Here, we'll keep rolling, we're pretty close to the all-time letter budget, which I like. Public safety, we have Robbie Hall and Warren Hay, we have thirty minutes of you guys, the sheriff has, that's five minutes a piece, and twenty minutes of questions, fifteen minutes a piece, if you have more than you share, so, the sheriff, be fair with each of you.
You guys coming up?
I brought them, but I gave some extras out, so I'll give it to you. Basically, we're at the very beginning, bless you, bless you, bless you. What I've done here is I've just put together, I'm not going to go over the whole thing, but I really wanted to be able to give that to Mr. Shields, who's new on the board, on involuntary commitments. Now, you'll see that I made an error on our total fuel cost on the fourth page, I corrected that, didn't see that until I got here. Two things that, two, three things that we're going to be asking for that we can see right now, the two school resource officer positions, one of those positions being the school resource officer at Dana Hala, that was a grant position, that is supposed to be reoccurring funds, we're hoping that'll be reoccurring funds again this year, we've been told that it will be, but it still has to go through the budget process. If the state doesn't pass their budget until later than July, we've got to get ready for it. The second position is the position at Cartuba J, that I temporarily placed an officer there from the road to Cartuba J, it being our only school that didn't have a vessel on the road. And if you remember correctly, I came before the commissioners, and I did not have an applicant that I could put on the road at that time, so in the meantime, I was going to utilize that position at Cartuba J, and that's what we've done. It's worked out really good, we're really pleased with them, just going very well. The second thing is creating four positions in our jail, that is one of the things that we're going to be asking for, the main reason that we're having to do that is under the new state fatal guidelines. I have no choice, we have to, HR has put it on our back, they've covered their tail by making sure that we're aware that that's a, that is policy that is mandated, and so therefore, I've got to put it on you all, because we have to follow compliance. Right now, we're working people every day, over the nineteen hours, and we have to follow compliance, or what's going to happen is we're going to get fined incredibly for not meeting those standards, and then I'm the one that's going to be held accountable for that, so we're going to have to come into compliance.
This come through the missed meetings?
This come through the Obamacare, the changes, everything. And the changes in, the changes in the laws, and we have to, we have to meet that mandate. And for instance, nineteen hours, that's not even two days, that's not even two shifts, that's one and a half shifts that we let an officer be able to work. Involuntary commitments, as you can see in the other three pages, that's where a lot of our hours go, just skipping around through here, we spent eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine hours sitting in Angel ER, involuntary commitments. We spent nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two hours total for involuntary commitments, and a lot of that is your officers working overtime or working, your part-time officers working over the nineteen hours. The good thing about it is, and I can't go into detail until we get everything settled, but working with the county manager and myself and the major, we've got an organization that we're going to look into contracting, doing our transports, and I believe our goal is to be able to implement these four positions without coming to you and asking for additional funds to do so, we don't have to do it with general current budget, that is our goal. Right now, it looks very good, I think it's too good to be true right now, so we're not holding our breath, but it does, it does look really well. The other thing that I want to ask is reinstate our vehicle policy replacement plan that we established back in 2003, shortly after I took office, the county was in a position where we had to replace a bunch of vehicles, because they were becoming safety issues, and I take at one time about fourteen vehicles, and one at one time, and so we come up with a five-year plan, six vehicles a year, and then every year replace the six worst vehicles, and at the end of five years, we would go back and replace those first vehicles. The plan that we had, had established was working great, we saw an incredible amount of decrease in our line item for vehicle repairs, that line item is now over a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, this year is going to exceed probably a hundred-and-seventeen thousand again, and at the end of that five years, we, the economy went south, and so we had to stop getting new cars, which I understand. Well, now, we've kept doing that, and now we're getting vehicles that have a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-seventy-five, transporting vehicles that have over two-hundred thousand miles on them, they become a safety issue. So we're asking, we're going to be asking for that to be established again. I'm not going to go over these other three, I just wanted to give, I know all of the commissioners except for Mr. Shields, not aware of involuntary commitment issues that we've had for several years, so I just wanted to make that available to you, and give all of you the most up-to-date numbers for 2014.
A couple of bright sides to the ongoing commitments is that, as a light wing, we get our first, telesight patient. Unfortunately, the young lady had to be transferred over the women to the hospital, but the telesight worked, we followed up on it, and the next thing is if, if the state chooses to expand Medicaid, part of that would be that a portion will be, can be, and EMS and certain departments will emerge, transportation power for the patient, so, but that's, we will know about that. Hopefully, that'd be a huge-
We're really hoping, we're really hoping, we're very excited at all. We're working with, like the sheriff said, we're in discussions with Angel Hospital and third party for the oversight of transport, these involuntary commitments, and also our lead counsel is looking into some options we may have as well, so, hopefully, there's a, there's a lot at the end of the term.
Two days to telesight, or is it, they'll get out of ER quicker, and then I'm going to work on a computer program, we talked about Saturday, nerve, without showing, I need to have a computer program, you go and then see what page it's on, we've talked about that for you, and you're, and why don't say anything? But you're already very tired, so, better not.
If you don't have mental issues, sitting, before you get into the ER, you sit in the ER for seven days without having mental issues.
Just to, to that, if you look, the sheriff here, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars is what we're spending to sit with involuntary commitments while they're at the hospital, and talking with other county managers that are from down east to the eastern part of the state, around the Raleigh area down there, and asking, nobody, what are you doing with your involuntary commitments? And I say, well, you know, we, we sit with them, I say, well, how long do you sit with them? What about average four to eight hours, eight being the high, and we're sitting, we're having to sit with involuntary commitments for an average of forty hours, and when I say that, then their guard is hitting four, but that's, it's not unique to Macon County, it's unique to our region. I think every county from Graham County to Haywood County is experiencing the same kind of difficulty.
Even Macon County. All the way down to Caldwell County, and it's just go back, they have better, which the accidents come in.
We've had as many as seven involuntary commitments at the hospital, they've actually shut their day, day operation, day surgery unit down, and put all of our involuntary commitments and all of our officers over there in that building, because there was so many.
We have been to the third floor with them, right?
And when you have one, when you have a patient, you know, you may have four patients in there a day, you have, you have, you work from two to four officers with, twenty-four hours a day.
Thanks to Andy Shields' work, there's a form that every search department has now, every hospital has now, didn't have before, and it's in a snapshot in time, it's amazing how they didn't keep records, they didn't even record them, and so when that comes back, it's a county that can be, we don't have it.
And that's, that form was created because our numbers were different than spoken out.
Vastly.
Vastly different, and we basically, basically, we're called liars.
You're not one of them.
Yeah, we were called liars, and so what we found out was that Joe Blow was committed today, and Joe Blow was committed again in two weeks, even though the process started all over, that was counted as one involuntary commitment, and so-
That is all.
That is all changed.
Question, here, Frank? To county employees, if they work twenty or more hours per week on a regular basis, we need to have them in retirement system, we need to be paying retirement payment, we need to be taking retirement out of their check, okay? So that becomes your first threshold, if you have part-time employees, and I'm using the air quotes, are part-time employees, they need to be at nineteen hours a week or less. Very difficult, what these guys have to do-
It's impossible.
It's impossible. And then, then there's a net, then thanks to the aforementioned, that was another pressure, if they work thirty or more hours a week, we need to be paying their medical payments for that employee. So there's five segments of the, of the employees. Here's the difference, they are considered seasonal employees, therefore, they do not follow any of these particular tasks. There's a different set of rules for this. Same, okay, they are considered seasonal, that's, that's the difference.
Where we're seeing the, like with the sheriff's department, with EMS, is the twelve-hour, twelve-hour shifts required, that's where you really run into the, and the EMS with the twenty-four-hour shift, though when somebody's coming in, filling an ambulance driver's shift, they're working twenty-four hours, but you are eight, see, if you're not team out there, and then like with the sheriff's department, when they take an involuntary commitment, they have to go to Wilmington, then boom, you see that right there, just like that. So that's where we're seeing the real problem, always with the maintenance department, part-time workers, like our transit workers, we've been able to get that under control, in fact, with solid waste, we've been able to bring those hours under control and get in compliance, but it's these extended shifts, whether it be with the involuntary commitment oversight and transport that's taking so long, or a twenty-four-hour shift, that's how I'm at.
Can't even send it to their train, a new detention officer has to go through six weeks of training, be state certified, first week they'd be out of compliance.
These four detention officers, that's what I'm asking for, is that they get in compliance?
We're going to have, we're going to struggle, but that's the only way that we know, and that's to put another person on each shift, because what happens is in the jails, if you have, you have three people that's working in jail, you have one person that's working in control panel, you got one person, and can't come out of control panel, they're back behind closed doors and controlled environment, then you have one person upstairs that's booking everybody, and then you have one person that's downstairs with seventy-five minutes. So we're going to add another officer to each of those shifts.
And gentlemen, if I may, just to put it perspective a little bit, that eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine hours that their officers spent sitting in Angel Medical Center in New York City, that's the equivalent of four full-time positions in its-
That's what I'm hoping, people's out, much more, hiring four more officers, just breaking in, giving shifts that are months.
Right.
I'm going to watch which-
And that's just to be able to follow in compliance.
Right.
If we don't hire those four, then we're not going to be in compliance, there's no way that we're going to follow in compliance.
Awesome.
There's no way.
I understand.
No, that's the only solution that we have to, we've, we've constantly tried to figure it out, we don't know, we're changing this time.
I think I have.
You have to remain in state chambers.
I can make the rest, I may be done in five. Now, there's actually a couple of issues I want to talk about today, some things that we did last year, some things we want to look at for this year, and the first one I'll talk about is the nine-one-one telecommunication. Essentially, one thing we're looking at with them is our staffing model, has, has remained unchanged since nineteen ninety-six, but yet, the volume of stuff that they deal with, and the other agencies that they serve have grown over the years. But before, and even last year, we must have let it process, you know, I could tell you the danger thirty-three thousand calls on the computer here, but what does that mean to the user of that system, the people that call in, what does that mean to them? Did they get us on the first ring, did they get us on the tenth ring, did they have to wait on hold? We've got eight nine-one-one trumps and two operators, so if we're on two ring at one time, somebody's going to be still on hold. But we talked to those folks, did we leave them on hold for three minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, and did they hang up before we even talked to them? And up until this year, we weren't going to be able to even give you that data, we couldn't give you any kind of facts to say to other, in my opinion, on what we thought they were doing. The good thing with this year, with the new telephone system that actually got installed late last year, we can break all of those numbers down, we can tell you when people call us, we can tell you how long it's ever been answered, we can tell you how long they were on the phone, we can present all of that information in a factual presentation, so we can look at our staffing to see if we're meeting needs of our customers, so that's one of the things that we're planning on doing this year, is to make sure that we've got that under control, and if we, we come into the budget process and we ask for anything, we have the facts to take, and that this is what we need, we're liable. One of the other things that we worked on this past year, most of you remember, we took out some equipment money out of EMS budget, and we squeezed the money under our salaries and worked on our staffing better. I can stretch things quite a bit, and we actually ended up stretching those folks into what now is our minimum staffing policy, for basically six and a half days a week. We have five ambulances on D and Macon County, there's three in Franklin, one in Highland, one in Dana Hala. Our minimum staffing policy is to keep four in the county at all times, and that's what that means is, if we have a trip out of Angel going to Mission, we're still at four, we have two in Franklin, one in Highland, one in Dana Hala. If we have a trip out of Highlands Cachers that goes to Mission, if we're out of Highlands Takes it, if we're from Franklin, go up to Highlands- been going on with the healthcare system. And the other issue we have is I can only stretch so much, so we had to pick a twelve-hour period during the week that was supposedly our slowest period of the week, where we picked eight o'clock Sunday night till eight o'clock Sunday, or eight o'clock Monday morning. The twelve-hour period from eight o'clock Sunday night, eight o'clock Monday morning, we dropped down to four. We have two in Franklin, one in Highlands, one in Manahale. One trip out of town that comes into that twelve-hour period takes us below our minimums. And we haven't stopped service, we still take a trip, we still move on. But what we've been doing is we'll call in our part-time folks, we'll have them come in, we'll call and have them cover the base when these folks are gone. The alarming fact that we have seen over the past several months is that we're using those folks on a more than regular basis. Nine out of the last ten weeks on that twelve-hour period from eight o'clock at night till eight o'clock Monday morning, ninety percent of the time, we've had to call a crew in from home, hook up, we've had trips out of town and we went below our minimums. What does that mean? Well, number one, that means you've got, if we drop below that minimum, you've still got one ambulance in Highlands, one ambulance in Franklin, one ambulance in Manahale. But pick for that one ambulance in Franklin has got to cover all the way from the Georgia line to the Swine County line to the Jackson County. That one truck in Highlands, they end up somewhere way down at Clear Creek or way down one oh six, they have no hope of getting anybody anywhere close to over there in their district anymore. So we try our best to work with those folks and bring folks in and provide that coverage, but I can see that we're gonna have to look at that in the future because that's just unacceptable for us to drop down to if they have only four ambulances, it's just unacceptable for the citizens. With that being said, we've also had some issues with the same issues that Robbie had with Affordable Care Act and retirement. Just like Derek was saying, when the twenty-four-hour shift on a regular basis puts us over those numbers. One of the things we talked about, we're already paying out the money, believe it or not, our salary money is actually okay, all of our numbers last week, and we were running about forty-nine percent, but it was one week for half a year. So we're, we're still maintaining our budget on full-time and part-time people, but we're spending the money anyway. And if we're gonna get into a problem somewhere with these folks being over their hours, then we may need to look at just making those folks permanent part-time employees, or doing something creative with the money that we've already got to meet those obligations, to make sure the county doesn't get in trouble. So we're gonna look at all that, see if we can tie that all back together with our staffing. Couple of things that have affected us, particularly like your critical access hospitals now do not do some services that traditionally have been done here or Highlands. You see your small hospitals, a little bit of everything. Highlands now, for instance, does research facilities. You may have something done here, cardiology-wise, needs to go to action. We've seen a lot more trips taking patients out to other facilities. We do a lot of trips in Transylvania County because they do urology, they have urologists on staff. So we've seen a lot more transfers out of patients than previously, we probably didn't handle in accounting somewhere. So that's been a little bit of an issue for us. We've also been a little proactive on things, when I tell you that one time we'll go to Asheville or go to Mission, some of those trips are instigated by us. We accidentally met with Dr. Maddox of Ashford Cardiology, and there are certain cardiac patients now that we don't even stop at the local medical center. If it meets certain criteria, we have an agreement with them in order to meet the ninety-minute timeframe that they want us to, to meet, to get a patient from a residence when we first made contact with them, to where they have a balloon therapy or something at Ashford Cardiology, we have to go from the residence straight to Ashford. And we've done that on the case, which again will put us in an issue to our management staff. So we're gonna look at all that, tie that back together, kind of a good option for it. One other project that we're working on, that I mentioned last year, which we're more involved, that I actually thought, is called Community Paramedic Program, or if you, if you look at it, it's in news, maybe called a mobile integrated health and care model. Affordable Care Act and hospitals and changes in the medical profession, patients and medical facilities, particularly medical facilities are gonna be penalized if you have patients that are readmitted into a medical facility within thirty days when they're discharged. If you come out of Angel Medical Center, you go back for almost any reason, the next thirty days, the hospital takes a cut on money because of the fact that maybe they didn't get something, maybe they missed something, they didn't follow up, they didn't check on patients. One of the things we looked at last year was seeing if we could do some sort of a model where, for instance, if we took somebody home that had serious medical condition at a medical facility, within the next three days, we do a visit at the home, we go talk to them, and it might be nothing more than them making sure that we, they take their medication, it might be something simple, just checking on them where they saw. What that does is saves hospital money, it saves us trouble in the long run, that we don't have to go back, pick those patients up, transport them, which puts a strain on our system. And it may even, one of the things we looked at was the volume of patients we have prior to medical facility, our frequent flyers, for lack of a better term, folks that have a chronic condition that we're familiar with, that we transport on a regular basis. Maybe we need to be a little proactive, we visit those folks ahead of time and help them keep their things in order at home, which frees up more ER bed space, frees up the hospital and things such as that. And I have to, to basically throw a hatterboy out there for Sheila Southern. She was the chairman of the care transition team in Macon County that the operator may or may not even be aware of. She works with all the medical facilities, including Angel Hospital, Highlands Cachers, to monitor these readmits and see where we're following through on these patients. Macon County is the only county that, that anywhere west of Asheville that has an active group, which actually has the data to support what the problem actually is. And that's a big plus for us. So we're non-capital equipment now, we've got some IV pumps that are old, some smaller things need to be replaced. I'm a big fan of planning ten years ahead of time and buying one or two things each year, so we're gonna try and kind of plan and replace that stuff, make sure we stay track.
How's his service been with you?
Um, it's been okay. We've had a couple of issues with maintenance as far as not being very maintenance friendly. For instance, heating system is very difficult to get to, which requires a lot of labor time to disassemble stuff to get what that's a problem is, which is in some cases a three-dollar hose. But so far, we haven't, we haven't had a whole lot of downtime this year on maintenance.
Do you need an ambulance to be good for trucks?
Real estate, we need to replace one here. Derek and I had this conversation with, with five front-line trucks. I don't like to kind of say I need three hundred thousand dollars one year and then ask for zero the next year. For budgetary planning purposes, as much as you like them, you can say I need this, this smaller amount every year for the next ten years, make it a year to plan. That's the way I like to budget, that way we don't get run out so much.
Nine weeks you was having that, that ending, she's got a snack for the nine weeks, she's gonna budget to pay.
That was from December thirty-first until about the middle of October.
Is that not true?
Which is actually our slow time.
That was a slow thing.
Good question. What's the missions ambulance here, are they still on day shift? Are they doing any?
They are, they're actually still on day shift, but we have arranged a meeting with Jason Hunt, who is the new medical director for all the critical access facilities that Mission has in this area, and the transportation director over the helicopter and the RTS, the ground ambulance program for Mission, with Highlands Cachers and with Angel Medical Facility on Snacks Friday, that day is in Highlands. So we're gonna get together and discuss the issues. One of the things we talked about with, and I met with Angel and Mission folks about two weeks ago, we're gonna look and see if there's some, some way we can streamline that call process, because we figured out it's very confusing for hospital staff to know who to call, when to call. And I'm, if it goes to Mission, I have no problem if they just try and call us, the hospital staff don't have to call multiple people. We've had a very good relationship with Mission, so I, I hope that, and unfortunately, we're gonna do it for that.
How are you doing with Sheriff's Department? Have additional pro, I understand there's some issues there, but overall, we're all good.
We have had very few times that we have actually run over our volume, where we've, where we've missed our minimum staffing, as long as we've got the five trucks. There were probably, that I know of two instances in the last two months, when we tried to call in another crew because all our trucks were busy. One of those cases it was handled by supervisor, a little truck to get there. In another case, the other, the other trucks freed up within about five minutes, we're able to get to another call and pick up the. So honestly, it, it has been a world of difference for us. Our biggest struggle has been always, since I started in nineteen ninety-five, is, till now, is handling your allocation. It's a, it's a balancing game between what needs to be left in Macon County to take care of the people in Macon County and the people that need medical treatment somewhere. And unfortunately, it's not the one, we're the only gang in there.
See, at some point, talk about the revenue structure. I'm sure my parents have been there. I'd say that people are using service or.
We're glad you back me on that. Let's say.
Any other questions?
Who sets your minimum staffing numbers?
We just, that's based on call volume and twenty-year efficiency. We have found out that based on your call volumes, Manahale EMS will run about a hundred and fifty to two hundred calls a year, Highlands will run to twenty-four to five hundred a year, and the other, subtract that from sixty-two hundred and some odd calls a year, the rest of those are in Franklin. We have determined over the years that as long as you can manage those effectively in the county, four trucks will basically keep us available about ninety. And that's, that's the industry standard. Ninety percent of the time, you want to be able to call me and for me to be able to automatically send you an ambulance out the door ready to come to you, not, not dealing with her, and then you have to wait on me to finish her before they come to you. But ninety percent of the time, they need to be able to leave my door to come straight to you. And that's, that's what we're built.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I bring greetings from Georgia, while I do as I am, and it's not too recent, so you ought to brew a short straw. See you after.
I'm gonna get the gear and I run at it. Let me start with the chairman, just to have a feel, one of them. I'll do this way, make sure these five people get it. Let's do it here.
The first handout that I gave you speaks to some concerns that I just wanted to make you aware of, and because this affects the local budget, the money that we receive from you all. First of all is, is, you know, you see I've got reversions, a lot of question marks, we don't know, and will not know for some time, what, in the future, in the past, what they've done, they give us money. And then as soon as they give them money and get that published in the newspapers and on all the media outlets, then they say, give it back to us. And so it's not practical. And so we don't know what that's, that's gonna be. Also, we've heard that it's gonna be a twenty-five percent reduction in the teacher assistant allocation, that was the talk as the session ended. What that means locally to us is two hundred thousand dollars, or loss of positions. So just giving you all these numbers. Also, this I think comes from federal, I think, Ronnie knows more about me than I do, but we, we got last year, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in timber sales, and we understand that that's gonna go away also. Driver's education is another subject that's questionable. There is a move to take that and put it back on the local. We receive eight thousand dollars a year for driver's education that may or may not be there. Also, and, and it was a, understanding that teachers will receive an additional raise this coming year, we have locally paid teachers that comes out of local current expense, and so if they give that raise, then we're looking at those increased costs related to salary increases, insurance costs, and retirement contribution. So saying that, that's kind of where we are with, with the, like, there'd be the concerns of the current expense. Any questions? Okay, and on the, on the second sheet you have here, this speaks to capital outlay. Capital outlay, before I talk about numbers, let me take where we were at originally. In the first round, and then Mr. Shields has helped solve this, in the first round of capital outlay requests that came from schools and from the, we received five point two million dollars in requests, in, in local capital outlay. And school board understood that that was not something that, that they was going to bring to you. They tried, want to be more realistic in trying to present to you what they need. On this first page that you have, we broke it down into three categories, renovation construction, then the segment's furniture machines and equipment, and the others vehicles. And I'm not gonna read these line by line, I guess that you take a look at them, and I'm gonna comment about a few of them. There's, in the, it's going all the way down to the vehicles, I'm gonna speak to that, and I've heard both Sheriff Holland and Warren talk about vehicles. We do have a, a small fleet of cars at the Board of Education, and I drove one of them over here for a meeting. It had, I believe it was a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles on it, and Dr. Baldwin's car, he drives, I don't have that much. We got a driver's ed car with a hundred and seventy thousand on it. In fact, having worked for you all for a period of time, I can tell you that very commonly with the surplus, everything that we've got by now, and would have been wanting to replace it off, we did lose the car this week, the motor, it's gone. It's so old that it's not worth the cost of the power. So we just, we're just gonna sell it for scrap, which is, oh, it's, it is a scrap. The, with the driver's education car, if, and I put an asterisk behind that, the driver's education car, if suddenly driver's education went away, but obviously that's kept it going away, we're gonna have to somehow come up with it. We always use that car, and of course, the car that current driver's education has with a hundred and seventy thousand miles, it would be moved into our fleet to replace the one that we just parked. So that's all we're asking for. The box truck's a twenty-eight thousand dollars. That box truck is nineteen ninety-two model we have over there, I don't have any miles on it. It is in bad condition, and we use that on a daily basis and make improvement every single thing, to Highlands and Manahale, and also out to the other schools. So it, it's really a waste of time. Maintenance truck, same way. Our maintenance department, trucks are pretty old, and we really, truly need to, if we're gonna keep those guys going out to schools and fixing all the things that they need to do, we need to replace it. The activity bus, the sixty-six passenger activity bus, the bus that we need to take out is twenty-three years old and it's two hundred thousand miles. The state right now, on Yale School buses, replaces Yale School buses every twenty years or whenever they get two hundred thousand miles. That's when replacing the curb.
They did increase to fifty, actually.
They go to two fifty.
Our convention was that time, that bus, we had it special, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and wait down there on our forty or eighty-five, a lot of big ones, a lot of difference in making.
Let's see, oh, twenty-three years old. We, this, this one's, this one's due for replacement, and so if you look at our total on that first page, we totaled up three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, excluding the bus. And then we put the bus on a separate line, totaled with activity bus, a four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Any, any question about the O two categories? I'd be happy to talk about any of them.
Any change, Terry? You should remember, three years ago, maybe, we, we done a deal with two activity buses to buy the, the model, the Lake River model.
Yeah.
Lot one, got a real deal, and anything like that, and check in anything.
No, no, people wanted to do that, man. I don't, I don't.
That was a good deal.
It was a good deal. It was a good deal. Okay, on the second page, Union Academy, we did not include on that front page anything prior to that. And so the first set of numbers, which says Union Academy capital outlay request, that came from the principal, and then I plugged in the numbers. And you can see that comes to 744,000, 744,000. There is, there is the highlighted yellow part, and that highlighted yellow part there, I just, I hesitate to bring up the subject with me sitting behind me because the last time it caught me, two days of work. Thank you, I appreciate that. But at Union School, we started removing the car, it still has the 99 S versus tile, which we immediately covered, it's non-problem, it's not a hazard, and I have been contacted by Raleigh, and they are in, they know all's going on, and they say that we handled it properly, and it's not a hazard to anyone. But that money will have to come up somehow in probably this summer's coming year, so we'll be, that much we're going to have to ask for from Union. Here, regardless of whether we clean that, we need to put that up and put VCT tile down and replace it, because the car is various, really in bad shape. If you jump on down to the blue highlighted part, and that's the QZAP down there, and you're all familiar with foreign language, QZAP, the quality zone, academy bonds. We took Union School and did a cost analysis based upon the renovation of Highlands School. And so if you just totally renovated your school, you see what the total is, 1,475,000. That's based again upon the schedule values that we had at Highlands School. I would imagine it's probably at least 10% increase since that time on some of that work. And the Highlands, high school wing, same thing. And so, you know, all we have here are just, I guess, your discussion. I don't know the durability due to your debt load and all that, but if we did a QZAP on those two projects, then that would get Highlands School, that would be filed with Lake and Highlands, and then, or the Union Academy, that would take care of that school. And then we would beat them to a discussion within the next two years about the big project.
Union Academy, this is a plan, they, this is not a choice.
Right, right. We must provide an alternative setting. Every school system, all 150 school systems has to make that debate. And so we've chosen to use both Union, and, you know, if you go back and look at the history, we were using that old pool hall in Jones Ridge to start with, it was called Jones Ridge Running Academy. And then when we closed Ocho and Union Elementary and Elementary School in 2001, then we moved the operation from the pool hall in Jones Ridge up to Union School, because I was paying rent there, and we owned that building, so we just moved it up there and it's been there ever since.
Did you find out, I take it by the blue, we can combine the QZAP as long as it's renovations here?
All right, we can, we can put it in, it's two separate projects, but we can put it in one request. Now, we can't go back and, we asked the question, could we go back with QZAP bonds and borrow issue, could we re-bond with their plan? And they said, no, no, we can't do that. But what you can do is take these two projects and put it in the same paperwork that's coming to you, does that make sense?
And the QZAP money is available?
Is available, we talked to him. Dr. Baldwin and I had a conference call with the gentleman down in Raleigh about it, and I think right now there's a little over 13 million dollars that's available right now. And it will go away December 31st of this year. He has no request at this time on the front end for that 13 million bucks. So, and he does not foresee that happening December 31st of having any money available in that program.
Is the labor been done at the Highlands High School wing? As far as the architectural work?
No, none of the architectural work, labor work has been done at either site. Basically, what I did, and I've got my, you've seen the printout, what I did at Union, is just, I went and just listed everything that I knew, I know what's been done at Anahalee and what was done at Elementary Wing and Highlands. And I listed it, and then I looked at the values that was there, the contract, and plugged that into it, and that's how I came up with the totals.
Could we come around, we have a serious discussion on this, is going to be replaced, we'll make application. I don't remember the last time we met one little item.
Right. But we don't, you know, at this point in time, as far as QZAP, it's my understanding that, you know, the school board then would ask you all for that consideration, and you would vote, yes, we're going to do it. Then at that point in time, we would employ someone to go in and do the paperwork, the architect, to get the numbers up, so then we'd make the presentation on the college.
You can't combine together with the main party?
It's in the same, it's the same.
Application?
Same application.
You've got to be separate.
Well, you have to have, you have to have everything awarded, work awarded and everything by December 31st, then you've got to have.
Give me other applicants, too. There'll be some.
Yeah. Any questions?
What status on the Phil St. School there? Do you talk about that?
Right now, I think the, I think the current bid is 88,000.
99,000.
That's right, we got a bid, but I'm not sure he's made that, has he made the bid already?
That's what John said on.
John's got paperwork on that for 99,000, right there.
In the period, until February 2nd.
12th?
No, it's.
2nd, okay.
February 2nd. The bid's going to run from January 21st to February 2nd, and he anticipates receiving at least one more upset bid.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. General, let's withstand the recess for back to you. All right, we'll resume the meeting, thank you guys. Let's take a little break, and we'll sit here until 2:30. Macon County DSS, Jane, please direct for service.
Thank you. Today I'm to speak on successful implementation of the NC FAST program. You know, we've been successful now. We have.
One, no one?
But, just for your information, this is the technology system that we're implementing over at DSS that will allow us to spend less time on paperwork and more time directly assisting families. Yes, North Carolina families accessing services through technology is what it stands for. It started in the fall of 2012, just real briefly, a little bit of history, and it started with the food nutrition program, the low protein program. We started with that because that's where most of the clientele was, so we were yielding the foundation. Things were rolling along, and it looked pretty good come summer of 2013, and then they started loading in the Affordable Care Act module, where they could do the online medicaid application and generate through the ACA process, all those applications. So last year I came before you, and we were talking about the food nutrition applications and resourcing problems, the other parts of the state were happening. We were successful in not having those issues, and we were concerned at that time about Medicaid. So today I've come to tell you, we've been successful in Medicaid. And I want just to give you probably about five reasons that we think we have been so successful. Number one, it's the dedicated team. We got great workers, they pulled together, they said to tell you it was not at times without wailing, gnashing of teeth, and tears, but it was just a transitional time. So they did meet every deadline, and it was without overtime or call time. So we were glad we didn't have any call costs. And secondly, and we think we've had a leg up, so just me, because we purchased Northwood's electronic document management system back in 2007, and we were the second county in the state to have one of that. So that everything's, every case worker's fingertips, they have one case that's electronic and loaded. Third reason is we listened to the workers, and we went back, whatever they suggested, we tried, we did work, we went back to the drawing board, tried, tried again, continued back the minutes. And so some of them call it, we have a good sleeping notebook, and we keep taking pages in and out until we get the right match, or the right feedback. Fourth reason, we implemented universal intake, which means that the state really wanted us to universal pay workers, where you told us only one time, and you got the services you need. We saw that wasn't a work because the system was still pretty complex, and actually, when they loaded the ACA in, we still have two separate systems, it's not integrated yet. So with that, we decided to do the universal intake, we hired the temporary workers, and so one person comes in, they give all their information, and then on the back end, we get all of our dedicated, the really experts, the ones that have entered the system and know it. So they process all the apps and the resources on the back end. People still tell their school one time that they get the services they need, and they don't know any different. So we were successful. Now the state probably recommends that as one of the best practices. And the fifth reason is the reports. You have to manage the reports, there's multiple reports, they come in, and they aren't always accurate with that. So when you look at, you understand that what may show is overdue is really not, or it's, may have due for goods. People are still getting services that they were eligible for, but it appeared might be no one. So we managed, and then we can appropriately address our resources if we need to check staff and the pattern before then. But that has been pretty complex for the supervisor, supervisor, to me, or to the rest. So two specific examples of success. On July 17th, I just happened to be talking to Derek, because statewide, there was like 100,000 overdue Medicaid applications. And on that day, and pretty much consistently, they in county had the lowest percentage overdue. So we were pretty much at the top of our game in the state. So we still had a few that might have helped us check, or something that was bothering us. So we were hardly successful on, I said that day, and I happened to talk to Derek, and I think he sent an email out to the commissioners about that, so.
Still down while this is in development?
While the state was.
We literally had workers, some of us that was hiding, they were literally hiding the work. And Jane, you want to be there, but we couldn't do it.
Well, and one of the other reasons I think we were very successful, we couldn't, we went for it, we already went through one technology conversion. So we had already struggled through that. Some counties had never done anything with upgrading the technology. Those of us that make, we as an older generation, that is, it's not the easiest thing sometimes to do that, too. So they, we've had some brush fronts prior, and some of the other counties have, we can all bet you that. I know IT's back here, they can agree with that. The second example of being successful, in November, there were 214,000 overdue Medicaid resource applications. There's a backlog, so this is a, that were due that month and overdue. And there was one county in the state that had no overdue app law, they were all worked, and that one county was right. So we were able to get all of our work put in, and get the benefits processed, when they were tested. Current numbers, I can tell you if you pull the report, we got, it shows 24 overdue Medicaid applications today, of which, three have helped us ticket system issues, 17 came in late through Medicaid of the long-term subsidy program, and we're late when we got it, two are pending disability, one has NC tracks, we have to keep that open, even though it shows overdue until NC tracks picks it up so the commodity can get paid. And then one's really a resource, and then currently, we show five overdue Medicaid resource, one is a help us ticket, three are being held open for NC tracks to pick up, and then one is actually an application, it's what I would do, but it's not a resource. Of all those, we don't have any, there's no food nutrition application or resource available. So we're pretty much apart as we speak.
Amazing.
Well, a lot of the counties, we've been able to give suggestions with those some county commissioners association, with the other, it was really interesting, we got a letter of Christmas about all the things we should do so we could be car, we'd do mall, so we were real. The only thing we haven't done is sheriff's data. I'm not being, I guess, a neighbor to other counties that are overdue, because that could potentially burn out people out.
And that was suggestion?
That was a suggestion, and that's the only one we have not done. And I don't know overtime, part-time, that's not, I think should not be the ones to have to do with that, because other counties.
The increase in, during this time, it was excellent, so, I mean, they just bring them, new directors, people have to do the hard piece there, they just got it, and literally away. One county, one county, the whole state, I don't want that, so, thank you.
I think, too, just to add, I went over and visited Jane and her department when they were first implementing, because that's something that we did on, that's very crucial to that, it goes without saying, is that Jane was able to, if you first have, so motivated and so focused for implementing that program. And I'm going to tell you, that building, that team, atmosphere was really, really integral in getting all that through.
He put things in?
No, he's not. No, he helps. Lots of snake, lots of fun, but you don't have fun in the midst of all the struggles. We've had a lot of support from commissioners, from the board, from everybody, it's been a good team, and all the way. One interesting tip that I'll give you on the Affordable Care Act, last year, of all the applications received that were generated from the ACA, the federally facilitated marketplace, 90% of those were denied. So that was a turn of luck that we had to do, and it was 300 on 400 that's, last year. That's for this year, we've gotten 127, I guess, of the enrollment. And we think the primary reason locally was no follow-up, they just would not return the information required, because they got the passion, you have to send those, you have to pay, and they just don't.
People come through, people like, coordinated, you know, they want you to get down.
Right, because they may potentially be eligible for Medicaid.
And we know that they're not. We know that.
Yeah, we try to, it's just, it's an interesting process. Another positive I share is our reimbursement money, our savings. When we understood how the ACA was going to piggyback on our NC FAST would be the beginning of this ACA, Affordable Care Act, and all of the Directors Association, found that we can get an additional 25% administrative dollars for all of the Medicaid administrative tasks related to intake and processing of that. So we started at the county officials association also, we all fought for it, and we got the additional 25% that worked out. So what we were already doing, we're now getting additional 25%. So last year, we netted out 38,000 in savings to the county for reimbursement. And this year, we're projected to have 238,000 in savings, because of that additional 25%. That's a little positive. Just to, real briefly, in the social work services area, in the social workers, that's the next phase of where NC FAST is going, if you develop, they want to really get it right. And what's interesting, NC FAST was started because of social workers, they want to try to generate some child protection, that may come from county to county, but everything changed, qualities got shifted, and improved the care. So they are developing a system that we probably roll out in 2016, 17, so it's a ways out. But in the year, we went ahead and recommended to county and county, they required commissioners last year to purchase the Northwood system for the social workers. So now, we have one electronic document management system for all of our DSS services, which has been more. for all of our ESS services, which has been wonderful. It's helped with efficient, it's making it a time-saving. So we'll be able to give you results in April. We have the pre-data for pre-Northwoods implementation of social workers. And the pre-data showed only 27% of your social worker time was given directly with the 5T, through their salary. The remaining 73% was documented. 47% of that, 73% was documentation. Waiting, traveling, and completing administrative tasks. Now, we counted one after another, with counties that have implemented Northwoods across the United States, so they extrapolated that and netted out to us. They anticipate 75 hours a week savings for social workers. We actually, well, remember that's a major additional position for many groups. And the workers will tell you they're called in, they're able to sit in court documenting it. Brad will pull up documents and give them, when the judge requests them. They'll have to come back to the office and come back. They pull up on the side of the roads to begin documenting it. Like in the highways, when they drop down, they pull off. It just, by its natural mind. And it can be uploaded when they come into the office, and you can still do the reviews. But we are very, very close to that system. One social worker told me, she said, maybe I should tell you how that is, and why that should be. But she also said it's the best use of money we have. So we express our appreciation to you too, but yeah. And we think it cost apparently $92,000 last year in the area. But we project a $500,000 return on investment in 5 years. So we will have things in that system. Any questions in the area?
One of you heard on, you just heard that in this long session, the pop's a huge cost to $10, $10 per system to make, along with other block brands. You heard anything?
We haven't got an elected county plan for yet.
It's only added also CCBGT, it's all of it. The weak quote, everything, or any kind of block brand. So I don't, we just need to keep.
Well, I have 230,000 dollars in savings that we can invest.
So how much have you been given?
On cash savings, about 184,000. And that was to be used however we needed to within the community.
Life, however?
Well, that's, we've been good about maximizing out the block brands so that we don't.
If you're in the grand, I'll let you just pour these through the mail. A lot of boards live out of state, so that's too much to spend, that's important money.
No, we will continue to be elected, and also we've asked to help to watch.
You ready on that?
No, I can't. Keep that.
Thank you, Jane, and your team over there.
Thank you.
Your team, you're doing a great job. I appreciate that. Our official website. We have any ones, and these are directional information technology, IT, as is common to know. He's here. Speaking to the board.
Thank you. Manager has asked me to present a couple of projects this year that we're expecting to have to address. Last year, we spoke about the sand storage, the paint storage used on our network. What we've done is we've approached several vendors to get preliminary budget quotations. And then we anticipate, based on the budget going out in the interim, producing RFPs to request formal proposals for each one of these projects. The sand storage project, for those of you who recall, last year basically encompasses data storage location for all of our organization's data. The access control system is a system that gets us in and out of the buildings and secure our facilities. Surveillance system, search balance monitoring throughout the organization. And then our telephone system is obvious. What we're proposing is to review each of these systems, consider replacement. The sand storage is something that we definitely want to replace this year. Access control system will need to be replaced this year. I'll give details about that shortly. Surveillance system needs consolidation. And then proposed maintenance on our telephone system or potential system replacement. This front cover page gives you a lot of the, a lot of the numbers that we've collected as far as preliminary proposals. The numbers vary pretty widely right now because the information we provide to the vendors is just preliminary. But in each one of these instances, these are highly integrated systems. So they'll have to come in and actually survey the situation before they can give us really firm numbers. If we were to replace all of these systems, there are also some additional supporting hardware that would need to be put in place. And those are things that may be part of our budget as far as cleaning our switch refresh and in addition of two servers. On page three.
Do the average four have not been?
Yes. That's on the, the widest variance is really on the phone systems there. The low-end, or budgetary proposal that we got was 255 and the high-end was 237. Also on the sand storage, that can, that can vary pretty widely. That depends on the type of technologies. We try to go for, and have some expectations. And I'll give you details of that on her sand proposal. Making County needs to replace its current data storage technology with a scalable lease solution. The current solution has not reached its end of life. The organization's needs have outgrown its capacity. Storage platforms are moving rapidly to solid state from spinning disk which is susceptible to mechanical failure. The majority of platforms are offering hybrid solutions. I recommend a platform that can lead the organization away from disk-based storage. On page four, and I'm skipping a lot of this, and we can backtrack, but there are a few key points that I'd like to hit on. Our current solution cannot be scaled up any further to keep up with the expected demand. The solution has been scaled up and out eight times to the extent of its original purpose. The selection of our solution in the primary sand virtualization project was intended to virtualize storage for eight servers. At this time, 64 virtual servers are in production. Our current sand is six years old and is due for hardware refresh. The original solution also was not designed to meet the storage performance requirements for critical public safety services such as 911 CAB, enterprise systems such as the finance server, tax server, GIS. Upgrades and design changes were made to increase the performance, disk capacity, network connectivity in the sand to accommodate them. Capacity and performance of the existing sand is unable to keep up with current need. Demand on the system is resulting in regular disk latency errors indicating that the storage is unable to keep up with requests from the host to virtual servers and clients. Frequently, applications are failing or freezing due to disk latency. Example, applications that have experienced increased interruptions in the past year of the 911 CAB, the financials. Current solution is barely getting us by. Last year, I strongly encourage a replacement of it. And be lucky if we can continue here, we are spending more and more time putting out fires with it to keep it running. Last year, there was a little discussion about the cloud. My position on the cloud is firm at this point. At the current state of technology, reliability, security, and performance of cloud-based storage makes it unsuitable for the majority of our production data. The technology has just reached the mainstream, and just as quickly reached the mainstream news. It's not mature, and it's not secure. There are some storage dependencies for other projects that are on the front page. All of the access control, security, surveillance, telephony summary proposals that have been provided require additional sand and ass storage capacity and performance. So all of these, all these other technologies tying in and integrating used as sand storage. The server dependencies are that all of the access control, security, surveillance, telephony summary proposals that have been provided include components that require additional physical servers or hosts.
Can you repeat? So it's safe to say that this is kind of, it would be foolish to, to replace your access control or your telephone system without first replacing your sand?
Absolutely.
That what you're saying, that the sand is your top priority?
I'm saying that the sand is a dependency for our ongoing operations regardless of these processes right now. If we don't replace access control system and surveillance system, if we don't pursue alternative telephone solution, that sand is still a priority just for ongoing operations.
So you're saying you can replace your telephone system, but you leave the sand you have? That's like sending a kid to school, and she's here, but no one's going to do it?
Well, that's right, we can't, we cannot do it. And I have additional information on the proposals and solutions should we need to discuss those. But basically, each one of those solutions, all these are computer programs that run the security system. Your telephone system is a computer and computer program. And in modern systems, they integrate a lot of those functionalities, like the voicemail, as a virtual server that runs in our current version of Fire.
Soon as you have it, you find the big enough deal.
I think that the preliminary information that we've had to provide has really taxed our department just to start these communications back a month or two ago. And this was sort of a trial run to find out the types of information that the vendors need to be able to propose some of these solutions because they wanted to know what kind of cards are in play? What kind of controllers are in play? How many numbers are there? How many sites are there? What type of services serve those sites? And I think that through that trial run, we've realized that there is the potential, once we get the sand solution in place, to immediately pursue replacing those solutions provided that we get the budget funded there. One of the goals of this.
Either you're going to use a dead process, or you're going to use a request proposal under that limited exception for computer technology?
So there's, it's likely going to be a combination of IT, RFPs. There are a few of the prospective vendors that do have state contracts. And they also have other contracts that would allow you to outright purchase the systems. But I think based on the variances that we saw in the pricing, that it would prove us to go through an RFP process either way.
There are some, you'll stay in touch with me if you get ready to process. There's two steps for it.
Absolutely. Our access control system is actually outside of its lifespan already. The control system relies on two or three different vendors components that are integrated. Lanell, Bosch, and Ready Key Pro. And here at the top, you see on page six, Bosch has ended support for the Ready Key Pro product line and its farm relationship between Bosch and Lanell International. We did one year ago, January 17, 2014. Aside from the badges, the card readers, and the door locks, all other hardware and software must be replaced. And so underneath that, the solution is basically 15 years old. And there are a number of other bullet points that indicate that really our only pathway to move forward is to replace that system. The access control and security products integrated with one another and with the fire systems. The replacement solution must integrate with the current Fire IO to avoid a system redesign or replacement cost. So your fire systems, the integrity of that system cannot be changed, the design of that system cannot be changed without replacing it. We do have two proposals that vendors have put forth that would be able to leave that fire system intact but integrate this new security solution.
Could you talk to the board, the Bosch has went out of business, they are no more?
Well, no, actually, they're still in business, but the software provider and the hardware provider are no longer able to use, not working together anymore. It's made harder ways. And so the software that we currently have and the replacement components for our system are no longer available, they're going to get replacement parts to be used.
So in other words, if something breaks in our system, we cannot, we can no longer find or replace it? We have to put a new system?
Depending on which part of it is. But right now, there are some critical parts that have been problematic. And we suspect that the probability of it failing this year is pretty high. We're just keeping real close tabs on it, trying to keep it back onto the systems. And we do have some resources, of course, some spare parts, but that's providing that those aren't the key elements of the system that require interaction with this.
How is that system?
It's 15 years old. The surveillance system is probably least significant, but I did want to focus a little bit on it because it does integrate with the proposed solutions for access control and security that the vendors have put forth. And our surveillance system needs to be updated and modernized to central management. Right now, we've got five or six separate surveillance systems and softwares to begin with. So if an event happens and an export has to be made and the data needs to be put off on the CD, then that means my staff have to keep track and understand how to run five different software products to do that. A vendor has put forth a proposal that will centralize data from the existence, the existing surveillance system into a virtual appliance that will allow us to go to one pane of glass to retrieve those videos or collect that data should we need to. The other, the other problem with the DVRs that the vendor employed are that they rely on individual hard drives inside. And so just like a computer, instead of being stored or backed up onto the sand, those drives fail. Last year, I think we had two DVRs fail at the jail. And depending on when they failed, you might have a situation where somebody says, well, we need the surveillance video for a case, and the data's not available. We wanted to get out of that position where we've always got that security to know that the data's been backed up onto the sand. The current surveillance system needs to be both centralized and decentralized. So for the example of the jail, we need the folks at the jail to be able to directly access those videos when we did, but we also need to be able to collect it and back it up onto the sand. The same for the ICOP system where they bring in video. Those data stands also need to be backed up onto the sand. We've had instances where they had a hard drive fail, or a hard drive fail, and the data wasn't available for a case. Any questions about the surveillance system?
Can you, can you, the DVR fail, is there a signal or you just have to check?
Well, we don't receive any notification, any direct notification if the signal's lost. Usually, you don't know it till you go in and retrieve the video and find out the video for that camera isn't there, or that if you log into it, that there's just an error report on the screen. I think one time, we did have to send a DVR off and try to have data recovery services on it. And that can be very costly as well. Almost all of, all of the DVRs that we have currently have the ability right in the menu with that DVR to write data to a sand. It says it writes those words, to say data to the sand. And so that's something we have, we have a leverage because we don't have free space on the sand to do that. So we rely on the hard drives that are in those DVRs. Moving forward, by moving to an IP-based camera system and a centralized surveillance platform under virtual environment, the DVRs that we'll be able to purchase will have to have, will not require as much physical capacity than DVR because it's relying on the sand for a location right here. Any other questions? It's our telephone system, page eight. The existing telephone system has become unreliable. The system, vendor, and service contract are not providing the level of service needed for our organization. Our telephone system is 17 years old. And we've had several incidents this year that have severely impacted our ability to have voicemails or have reliable communications with our clients. We also had problems getting quotations or upgrades to the system, inconsistencies in those quotations. And there are some other persistent issues that still remain with dropped calls, lost dial tone, inbound. dial tone, inbound callers receiving dead air, fast busy, or recording unexpectedly. We've been aware of the issue and have been receiving cards in the phone switch over two dozen times this year. We've had to go down and receive cards in the phone switch. That's a problem. We've opened tickets for the vendor and they've made multiple attempts to resolve the issue and hasn't been resolved yet. The impact to end users during each event has negatively affected productivity and throughput of the organization. We've got 107 trouble tickets that came in during the voicemail event alone that came in our department to resolve issues with access to voicemail or resetting passwords to voicemail and accessing the system. Current phone platform is not keeping pace with innovations and competitors and it's becoming more costly to maintain licensed and engineered solutions for it. The nearest alternative resellers for our current phone system are in Knoxville, Atlanta, and we have reached out to them for proposals as well. Numerous nearby companies that have the same phone system have replaced it with more modern system. Those are the basics to read rest of the report there.
Any question? Just do it. Is the problem that we're experiencing with the phone system, in your opinion, is it a problem to do the phone system or is it a problem to do the vendor, the service?
Well, the primary, the primary issue that's affecting us most is probably due to the vendor. And the vendors don't feel as easy to respond to the issue. They've had some staff turnover and the level of documentation that they have produced while deploying the phone system has not been sufficient. So we're basically basing a learning curve with new staff coming and supporting the system. But there are some, there are some issues with the system that probably would be resolved by replacement of the system. And basically we're looking at legacy technology, we're looking to walk forward in modern technology, but it still has this legacy evaluation. And I think several of the solutions that we can handle that consider, basically taking the approach of operating from a virtual level so that you have less point of failure in the system. Right now with our current system design, the voicemail solution that we've got in place relies on a single server that has no backups on it. It has no, no alternative solution. So if that server fails, we'll leave without voicemail in for another month. All of the solutions that we've done before basically address that issue by making general review due to typical redundant services in place. Or our system has the stance to be redesigned and add that level of functionality, I think would be possible here. I know it would be possible here. We've got one more page here at the end. Replacement of these problematic systems will significantly pre-up IT administrative time in the long haul. In the short term, demand for IT is expected to increase as projects, proposals are reviewed or solutions are deployed. It's very important that in preparation to RFPs, to replace critical infrastructure, make county commit sufficient resources and expertise to the process. The requests, selection, deployment, maintenance require careful consideration. The RFPs must contain accurate details of highly complex systems and their integration in our expected results. Vendors must commit to maintaining appropriately trained and certified staff in order to carry out and sustain the solution. Vendors must commit to fully documenting their solutions as they're deployed and their changes moving forward with a full inventory of the hardware, software, and system components. Vendors must share the documentation with Macon County staff effectively to select and support and maintain the systems internally. Macon County must commit to maintaining the system to a supportable hardware and software revision. So if we fall in the rears on our software revisions, then that means that additional costs come to us whenever we try to catch up and resolve the problem. With all due respect to our leadership and management, I strongly and finally encourage you to consider additional information given to staff. The value of any enterprise information system cannot be realized unless IT staff has sufficient time to be involved in the deployment, participate in the systems' operation training, and pursue the certifications to support the system.
The folks you got in?
Eight. One of them's GIS. Eight and one of them is GIS. Mapping.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Andy.
Good job, Davey.
When our office staff, just like the other department said, I asked Andy, what is, what would you say the mission statement of your department?
Fair enough. We have Mr. Richard Blackham with us, most experienced and well-respected tax administrator in the state of Oklahoma. Revaluation, so we've had Richard help give us an update on that issue. Well, the time reckoning is few. Okay, this file. The first set of numbers I'm giving you is a history of the reassessment in Macon County since 83. I came in 85, so I got the tell him of appeals in. And if you look at these numbers going up, you know, it looks like we averaged about 60% of increase every reevaluation cycle. This year we're losing 14.45%. So that's very unusual. One thing these numbers don't tell you here, and I just noticed from the history of being here, part of the revenue neutral tax rate law that went in effect in North Carolina a few years back had a little bit to do with the mountains and the coast in the increase of values going up so substantially that the common person didn't know what an average during these 91, 99, and 2003, Macon County had some of the largest net tax increases in the state because like us in Jackson, there, or, you know, anything, anywhere sold at a high dollar. Well, that's, has really come to a point of standstill the last few years. And so the total value of real estate has gone from 8.9 billion down to 7.65 now. Now I'm going to give you a breakdown of each township.
What do we like to study on the value?
Oh, Paul?
Yeah, I know we're hot, we're hot.
Well, that's kind of misleading because you have to look at all the, there's different cycles of reassessment. So this year there's 15 counties going reassessment. So we're not all on there. And actually do a cell ratio and they look at the effective tax rate. And of course, when they do that, Macon County has, this year we're still the lowest. But now you can break it down based on percentage per person, but then that's inflated because you've got Macon County, Jackson County, the mountain counties, and the coastal plains down on the coast where there's being inflated because it don't count the part-time residents. And so-
It's just overall, like we're at 8.4, we're at 8.9 billion, the value of Macon County.
For our size county, that's pretty high, we're higher than, I think, Derek called me. Down in Morris County where you were this weekend, Hayward County said that they have $80 billion in value. Well, that's, I don't know, Raleigh may get close to that, but I said, no, that's wrong. They got 7.3 billion there. And we had 9.3. Now Jackson right across the hill, same number of parcels and everything, they got 11.3 billion. So, you know, all that. But for our size county, us in Jackson and Air County, Codereck County, per person is pretty high.
But I don't think it's a little bit.
Yeah. So it just depends on the market and see, Jackson County, they're following us, they're going to revise next year. Well, Hayward County's still a couple of years out. So, you know, it's hard to equalize them totally. The, the second sheet you have there is the townships and you'll look and see it has the parcels in each township, then it had the '07 value, the '15 value, the difference and the percent change. And that's pretty well, if you look, and as I've told some people, Franklin City and Holland City, I mean, that's where your population is. That's, you know, that's going to, they're going to stay pretty stable. If you look out in the Platts Township, a lot of vacant land out there took a big die, Burnington, anywhere there's tracts of land, it's going to take a bigger die. If you've got residential housing, you've got a house in one acre or a house in a lot or something, that's going to be more stable. And that, that's what these numbers direct you out on that. This last one is more so for budgeting. This is what I got the commission, Derek, in this hall a week or so ago. And when you start talking about tax rates and things like that, these are the numbers you'll have to stay really close to. As I said, the vehicles, it's actually being taxed through the state now when you get your tag. We feed all that stuff to the DMV, but to bring apples to apples compared to last year and the year before, that's about $277 million in value. Utilities are running 125 to 130 million right there. So your total, when you add the, the reassessment in is 8.057 billion dollars, which is, you know, less than last year's 9.3 or whatever, everything. So you're losing about 1.3, 1.4 billion dollars. And then you break it down further because each fire district has their own tax rate. So these are the numbers we are looking at for each fire district. So when they turn in their budgets and that, and I don't know their fire rates right here personally, but Franklin, if they had a seven cent tax rate last year and if they lost value, then they won't have to have a more great issue. Some of them, I think, Mountain Valley and Cali, they got a pretty high rate, but it's going to go higher because they have a lot of vacant land. So it comes into play now when you look at fire departments and all that on the revenue neutral, then a budget becomes a big item because you're going to have to go up with their rates too. So it's not just setting that 33 cent tax rate, you're going to have to set all those other tax rates based on the input from the other departments. The values are out. I had some people in Atlanta and they get it. Franklin, they, I didn't know anybody got any today in the mail, but usually Franklin runs probably three, four days behind the metropolitan areas because the mail goes to the city, works its way back. And there was about 36,000 decreased in bags this year, 36,000 parcels out of 43,000. Now how's that equate? That decrease on those parcels run greater than 1%. So some of those people will see a tax increase still because if you're less than 14 and a half percent, depending on what the budget says, everything goes about, then whatever the difference is, if it's 3%, you're probably seeing 3% tax rate. Now there's many that will have a tax reduction. And then the other end is the other 6,000 were pretty stable or values went up. And I think I showed you last month, one example went from 1 million to 1.8 million. And we know that's good because, you know, that's what the market is in that particular area for those type of homes. So that person would have a substantial tax increase. So all that numbers from last one starts resonating of where you fall when we start talking about tax rates. Now to go on to the field process, when you get your form, there, there'll be a complete form, you have your information, your ownership and all that. Then if you disagree, you've got to check it out, send it back in. I think there'd even an envelope in there because I had to return one from an old address this morning and it had an envelope in there. So there is an envelope in there. That's the informer part. I mean, you've got 30 days, get back with us, we'll review everything that comes in, send you another letter, then you can go to the Board of Equilization if you disagree. On top of that, we also open, it'll be open this afternoon, online appeals. If you pull up our website, you go to the appeal form and you walk it through like any computer program. And you fill it out just like if you go to Kevin's intern's office and you fill out application for intern, it'd be the same thing. You fill out the application, you process it, you attach appraisal, electronic file that you got from one of the appraisers, you hit process, that goes to our developer, he emailed the county that you got to fill. I go out there and I pick that information, it goes into our appeal system. I mean, it's all a process. There's not, there's no county our size that even have anything close to that. Wake, no, Wake. There's a couple of other counties that, one where they're taking online appeal, but it don't populate the things, don't track it like we do. It also will run and it'll tie to the GIS system. So we'll see where, I'm talking to Jimmy about his house or something. I said, well, he said, Mr. Jones down the street, he said he'd appeal it or it'd light up. And I can see that Mr. Jones did, Mr. Shields did, you know, so it's pretty sophisticated for a small county. That there's system, we ended up spending $7,500 on and that's all being at ours. But anything like it that's stable costs 30,000 plus per year plus service charges. So we had it developed with our own staff and Andy Phelps and some other people, Mike Peters and, you know, and it's really going to save a lot of good time. May not be big this year, but I'm telling you, in four years, we'll do it again, probably 50 to 80% will be found online. I mean, that's just where the world is. So we're, we're making inroads, like Andy said, for things down the road. We're investing now, every little dollar we can scratch and save. It's just like that big savings of us doing the little house. I brought that up in 1991, well, 491 appraisal, we need to do our own stuff. And see, after all these years, we're saving four or five million dollars. So you implement little pieces and soon you got a nice program. So I think we got it covered. We got the written coming in, we got people stationed downstairs. We still have the phone system that Andy talked about that is, where you have an outdated phone system. And you have to put yourself in place. I know we all do this. You call somewhere and you got a bad phone system, what do you feel as a person? It's not a good deal because that's usually your contact. But put yourself in place that over half the residents or half the property owners in Macon County to pin on a phone system and talk somewhere. And then we got, what's going on? We got it patched and that's about the extent of it, it's patched. But we got that covered, we got the online stuff for people that deal with that, we got the mail-in, the people that can't get out because they're elderly or on vacation or out of the country. We got the GIS, we got the website where you can search your neighbor's property or similar property. or similar property, so, I mean, all the stuff is available to the public. And the website is designed, and we designed it a couple of years back, well, ten years now, we designed it so whatever information you get off the website, if you came down here to our office, you got the same information. So we didn't want to be different, so that way it saved you a trip, or you'd be out of the state or something. So, uh, the number of deals, I have no idea, because as you saw those numbers, we hadn't ever gone down a bag. I mean, some of them going up fifty, sixty, ten, four years, now we've gone down fifteen percent. New record. So, uh, we'll, we'll be there for, I mean, duration, whatever it takes to, you know, get through all the deals this year, and hopefully, by the time you guys are ready to adopt a budget, you know, that's the field process will be all cleared up and done clean for the year. Just thought of it real quick, and all the question about comparing counties, another thing you didn't make major, which, it depends, Robertson runs with, I saw a county under one, so, and that's, that's not really the target to compare, I guess, but I believe you know. Yeah, and, uh, Scotland County, if you look there, I mean, their values never changed in twenty years, I mean, it's all farm.
It's all farm, and they got a, 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 a,[797.82]
That will be contingent on us getting an agreement to enter into the use of our facilities through by the league council prior to entering into, that's still contingent on, on that being done. So we'll have to develop an agreement that lays out what the county expects and what the vendor, the terms director is going to give us in return. And we'll have to have that agreement through by the council. So that's just for the, for the meeting.
Yes.
Moving on, backstop padding. Four of our fields will have a concrete wall behind home plate. We've got, we've got to pad those. And we're going to put padding on, on the chain link fences also to save them from getting kind of pushed out. If you go to the red park now, fences behind home plate look, look pretty rough. Just from balls hitting it on a continuous basis, it'll, it'll add to the overall theme of things. Fence cap is the plastic PVC pipe that goes on the outfield fence. If you want to save a ball, if you're going to close the basketball goals for the multi-use court. Then we get into picnic tables and trash receptacles.
Big concrete tables, wood?
They, these are, these are the metal picnic tables with corrugated, basically, basically powder coated. Yeah. They'll last forever, the, the duration of the park. This is, and those prices were from one vendor. The BSN is, is, has gave me all these quotes now. And they are all quotes from that KPN purchasing network that, that we went. They're a vendor from them. So these, these are very compatible prices. Two ADA picnic tables, one for each side of the picnic shelter, and then 22 other picnic tables, five of which will go on each side of the, of the shelter within, there'll be the additional picnic area next to the pond, and then a few other tables scattered throughout, throughout the park. I consider those one-time parking expenditures because the life of those is 10-plus years. We shouldn't have to buy any more of that stuff for quite a while. Other expenditures are the bases for all the fields. That's putting a home plate and then bases.
Is that a regular thing?
It, it will be. Yeah, we, we have to go, fully requires a magnetic base now. We put the mounts in the ground and you stick a magnet on top of that mount in your base. It sits there so if you slide into it, it won't snap your leg. It, it breaks that off. And there's three different levels of magnets you put on depending on the adults playing and which, which age group is playing. But that's, that's what those are for.
Is it based on layers?
We, we buy a, and, and that will not be a total cost per year. We do buy a new set of bases for every field every year. And we usually put them on come All-Star time. And then we start the season out with that, with that set for the next year. Bases, they, they take quite a bit of wear on, on these things.
Compared to that pro baseball game, do they change your bases out and set them in fifteen?
Yeah.
They get two sets per game.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's a little overfield.
But this, this includes the, includes the home plate in it, which was, is the most expensive of the, they're about $300 apiece. And we replace the home plate every year. Home plates last for anywhere from five to seven years before you have to replace those. The wood in them rots out. They get, they get soft. But the home plate will, will stay. And, and actually, once we have the, the base mounts and stuff in the ground, the bases get cheaper. All we buy is the, is the top part of the base that, that slides. So you've got, you cut that 5,346, its initial startup, down to about 1,200 to just buy the, the bases for each, for each of the fields. Eight portable pitching mounds. The mounds, everything out there, every field will be totally flat. There won't be any permanent pitching mounds. Everybody, all these tournaments now are going to these portable mounds. And this way, girls softball can play on it at seven o'clock. We take that mound off and boys baseball can play on it at nine o'clock. It's a, it's a styrofoam and it's, it's covered with ashtray turd, basically, with, with a mound on it. There's, there's various sizes, but that's what everybody uses now. Most parks are going to them full time. But especially since we plan on having, hosting tournaments here, we never know if it's going to be a girls tournament this week or a, or a boys tournament.
Softball doesn't use mounds.
No, from flat, from flat.
Baseball.
Yeah. So that, that will help us not having to scrape off a mound and build, you know, build back all the time. It takes a full day to build a, a good mound. And it takes up to two weeks for it to cure and, and set in. So the portable, portable mound is, is the only way to go. We should get at least three seasons out of those, sometimes more, film they get mistreated. But these will be taken care of, taken in and out on a more regular basis because we'll be having softball and everything on, on all the time. Pickleball nets for, for the multi-use court. Some of y'all get bombarded with emails.
Rigor.
Yeah, about, about pickleball all the time. And two dry line field markers for a total of, for a total cost of $14,739. That is the stuff that we needed to buy every so often, but not on a, not on a year-to-year basis.
Bleachers.
The bleachers are in with, with the Parker Meadows cost. They were required for our park grant. So we did include those, those in. The equipment that we needed out there will be a, a work truck, 22,000, two John Deere gauges, one, the original thought was that one could do it. But that place is huge. Once you get out there and actually get on it, looking at a map, you think you can get there with one. But there's no way to fix all the fields in a, in a single day before ballgames start that evening with, with just one being able to drag and mow. So we need two of those. A tractor that will have a mower attachment underneath it with a, with a latte coat. A ball field mower, which is a little bigger. It's got a striking system on it at 10,932. And then just a grounds mower that'll mow everything on the outside of the, of the ball fields. We don't want to mix those two. We want to cut the, just the fields with, with that mower and don't cut anything else. Just keep the weeds and everything else out of it. For a total equipment cost of $75,377, which I have 22,500 of that in this year's budget. We had already planned to buy a mower because obviously we have to maintain it whether it's open or not. So we were going to have to buy some of the equipment out of this year's budget prior to the, the upcoming budget. For a total that we will need is $52,877. For the total additional cost of the Parker Meadows project now that we'll need once we open is $149,624.4.
The ball field mower?
The, the ball field mower will just mow the outfield. You don't want to bring, you don't want to cut like a rough area and come in and cut the ball fields. Those blades will stay sharper all the time. And it'll, it'll have a, basically a bagging system that you'll take the clippings off of.
A golf course prepares for the, when mowers mow the trees?
When they mow the fairways.
When they mow.
That way you don't, you don't bring the grasses. Because even though we've got one type of grass out there now, there'll be some rougher areas where we didn't have to plant where it's going to be just walks out there. And you don't want to bring that stuff into the ball field. The, the, the next, uh, next page is the current structure of our departments. And, and their salaries are on there. As you can see, the director, I've got an athletics coordinator, I've got a Nana Hala site supervisor, I've got a community building slash special events coordinator, I've got three building attendants, one of which spends part-time on the greenway. And then over in the park, in the maintenance department, we have three, three workers, three full-time workers that fix the fields and anything else that, that tears up. And then I have, or I don't have, Steve Ledford has one worker down on the greenway. Their total of those combined comes to $344,308. That's the total between our two departments in salary. With a new structure on how we would like to see happens, we would have a, a director, an athletics coordinator, a red park grounds supervisor, who is kind of like the referencing back to the golf course, the golf course superintendent. He will be open the grass, keeping things cut, testing it to see what, what fertilizer it needs. But not only at that park, but at the red park and up at Nana Hala. We've got a, a ball field up in, up in Highlands, too, that's under contract. And it gets taken care of by whoever's, whoever's got that contract. Then maybe restructure, Nana Hala site supervisor job just into a red park worker. Then my three building attendants, one of which was, is half of a, half of the greenway. Then two full-time red workers out at the red park that's now there. And taking the one that is there that just retired, put him out at Parker Meadows where I have two at the red park, two at Parker Meadows. And then the, the red park grounds supervisor. It'll take three guys on a daily basis to, to line and drag and mark the fields and keep everything mowed and cut along with about a bit of part-time help. And then obviously the, the greenway, which the red park grounds supervisor would oversee also. That's, uh, that's the thought behind. The total of that comes to $383,139. Total increase to the red park is $156,616. Total decrease to maintenance, if you combine, take those guys that are working for the red park now in the maintenance department, out of maintenance is $117,823.68. So a total overall county budget increase is $38,792.79. By restructuring some salaries, decreasing some, some that were retired at an upper scale, hiring them back into the lower scale, we're actually able to decrease what I originally asked for two and a half years ago as far as salaries with three people by about $20,000.
So bottom line, the total overall increase as you're going through those kinds of measures is $38,000?
It's $38,000. And you're, you're getting two new employees for that total. And the following is just a, basically a organizational scale of, of how I would like to see our department structure.
So some concerns, concern on the red park, these leads on there, he could get the discretion. There is some concern that there is. And is that the thing not being done on time or done properly or kept up? So do you have money in the budget, in the rest of the budget? Are you looking at specific things that we need to look at there?
We are. We, we've got, we've got a list of things to do to, to help bring things up. It's kind of how they are now. Some of which has already happened. We, we took the old top off the, off the Little League dugout. We go to Little League field now, the old scorers booth is no longer there. It looks like there was just two dugouts, like it was originally made to look without putting the scorers booth up on, up on the top of the third base dugout. But we took that down, replaced that roof. We plan on fixing up the back cages by putting carpet down. Obviously, we'll wait for a little bit better weather. But that'll all happen before ballgames start. And everything else is, is nothing major. You know, no major issues. It, it hurts not having a grounds department. You know, those workers are, are maintenance workers. They may get pulled off to do other things, you know.
Community building.
Uh, no, that's, that's community building staff. That's, that's not. There will be a, an issue with, with the community building also that we need to look at in this kind of budget of, of roof. We've got some leaks that come down the wall. So there'll be, there need to be some roof work. But as of right now, I don't think that that's going to need to increase my, my maintenance. But we'll take that out of our maintenance line.
That means being the old standby.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And the department has, or that, that building has been there quite a long time. Quite a few people have used it.
In, in, in our operation?
For Parker Meadows, basically like the, like the park is now. If there's nothing going on out there, it'll be daylight to dark. We won't turn the lights on unless there's ballgames. And if there are ballgames, whatever time the ballgame's in is, is closed. There's not, there's not a drop dead curtain. That would be for y'all to decide. But, but right now, it'll just be whenever, whenever ballgames end is, is when, when those end will be, when we cut the lights out. Security will be, we will have some kind of, of a camera system out there. But it'll also be, Sheriff's Department will control it like they do the, the red park now. We usually have guys, while we're open, I've always got somebody in the park. And then people kind of, kind of ran out. And after that, in my eyes, you're kind of trespassing. If there's no ballgames going on and the, the rest of the park is dark and you're in there, we'll get.
It's going to be approved well.
Five or six. It, it will be. The, the roadway especially will be let through it.
Through, through the mound?
Yeah, by, by you. But when the, when the, the rule basically will state when, when the ball field lights are out, park is closed. It's not going to be open 24 hours.
Your neighbors, it's a very large population?
It, it is. There, there are two subdivisions above it. But I've heard very little complaints, you know.
There have been public hearings involving people that have been concerned with traffic and been.
Maxwell Hall.
Maxwell Hall Road and the lights. And we addressed that by going with lighting that we did. It's, the lighting is very direct. If you, if you walk 10, 15 feet off the field, it's dark. It's, it's, it's likely LED lights if you have a car that's straight to direct lighting. Sometimes it seems to be water light, but it's not like to the red park. So that, that answer that concern, then the second concern that hit that, Maxwell Hall Road. So we addressed that, Maxwell Hall Road, we sort of have emergency aid.
Yeah. Well, we, we're not allowed to put anything into barricade. Yeah, because it will not. No. You won't bypass the main entrance to, to drive around to come in the, in kind of the back way.
So the town of Highlands is probably significantly cheaper and a better job boost on subcontracting the land. Consider that for parks?
Uh, we, we looked at that at, at the time and, and the cost savings with, with it being one field up in, up in Highlands. We, we did look at it and do a few times, that one field by the square footage of the other fields, you know, and had to buy eight just for that Parker Meadows site. It, it wasn't feasible at, at the time. I'd actually talked to a couple of guys down here and they were way, and they were way more as far as the, what their contract would be than it would be to hire full-time guys that are, that are out there. Plus, they would be able to handle the, the day-to-day issue. Most of them didn't want to do the, the bathrooms and cleaning, you know.
Yeah, I figured somebody else would be able to.
And, and that type of stuff. Yeah. Well, most of the maintenance we will, we will get, where it's going to be done from $8 an hour with, with a part-time worker, with a weed eater and a, and a mower. And it's, it's hard to beat that subcontracting it out to, to that price. In Highlands, it works great because we would have to send somebody up there every day. And, and for that to be a one-site thing, it, it was a little different whenever you put it on the scale of a, of a whole park system. Some larger communities, Charlotte, some of these folks have, have hired, have went into contracts with, with major corporations that come in and, and take care of their grounds totally. Some golf courses are, are starting to go towards that. But it's, right now, I don't think there's, we don't have anybody large enough because basically those workers work at that park all the time. I mean, you'll be mowing the ball fields twice a week and the other grounds once a week. So it would take somebody who had a contracted business, that would be pretty much the only place that they could, that they'd be able to do would be our, our park.
Thank you.
I think it's been a lot of little things. We appreciate the job you've been, Mr. Work percent of the red, red board as well. This man does work easily 30 to 40% more than he has in the past because of this, because the addition of Parker Meadows, it's, he's done majority of the legwork, has his hand back, back to the room there, Jack. A lot of this work, running down these prices, doing everything for the park of grand. But these guys have worked overtime. They've not been compensated. And I just hope to say thank you for the hard work and good work that you've done with the park.
Thank you.
Bring you into the, the last Golden Expectations. Jack, you had some of the new questions as far as planning.
Anyway, I'm not here to ask your advice. We're trying to manage. What we'd like to ask is that we have a joint planning board meeting with the board of management and the board at the time. We'd like to have a mayor at that time and discuss any goals that you have with the planning board. The planning board will discuss those right now. And the county staff, if you can put as far as we think, we appreciate that.
We didn't locate your thing.
I think, I think it's a good idea, Jack.
We've talked down a few years.
Or, or suggestion. We'll pass there with the, finding the meeting time and place. I think it should be some time.
The schedule's planned.
We're working very hard on that.
When's the plan for the meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Probably about the first week of February.
We closed.
We're late on the 20th last week.
We, we leave on the 20th.
Yeah. Do we need to eat?
I have to, but I like to eat every day.
Yeah.
We don't have to scream or make anything down.
Yeah.
I'll do it somewhere. They will place some things.
Be my favorite.
Well, there's people.
This is personal, I believe on 20.
So maybe we, we meet, our board meets the, the 10th.
The 19th.
What about, what about February the 9th on Monday?
I can't do it from 6 to 6. We can't do it from 20 to 18th night. Let's say 22, 25th or 10th.
12th or 10th.
So the 9th will be open.
I think there's a Congress of Meadows in the Henders Bill.
So you want to try to have this meeting, why, why, tell me again, why we want to have this.
What do you think the board's going to be ready?
We're working on pretty hard up now. It's like for the.
No, I did get a call in from Pat Mason requesting some information coming today and kind of that. He said he was hoping to get back with me before it's in the week.
What about, what about the 17th?
17th of February.
What about 17th?
I'll be back.
17th?
I'm going on the 16th. I'll be back on 6th.
I'll be back from 16th.
10th away, if that's okay.
So Tuesday, February 17th.
Do you want me to work on that?
We should get the jar.
So you let us know that if.
Yeah, I'll, I'll circulate Jack's emails to me back through y'all.
Let's, let's make that evening, evening.
Just reschedule.
At 6:00 PM, you say?
Yeah, just the evening.
Locations to be determined, Jackson. Find us a location.
If it's a making bank book, I don't think they charge.
We didn't expect that.
You're free charging.
As a committee, we're doing a U-shaped tag.
Mr. Chairman, also as part of this, as part of this segment of the Golden Expectations for 15, 16, Mr. Dekker has a brief powerpoint presentation in correlation with some of the work that we've been doing and looking back through the preliminary pay plan, or the pay plan that was implemented by Springstead. We were not able to finish any plan, that pay plan this fiscal year. And we looked at some different options. We went back and looked at the pay plan. This is just if Mr. Dekker's bring board update on where we currently stand in that process.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
Folks, I know it's been a long, productive day with a lot of information. I know that I'm the only thing standing between you and supper time. So we will see if we can move through this. Brief history lesson. Springstead Incorporated presented a classification compensation study to the county back in July of 2012. And essentially, the study presented the county with three implementation options. At that time, the county chose to implement options one and two concurrently. And under option one, all employees' salaries were raised to a minimum of their new grade when a new pay scale was adopted by the board. And this affected over half of our employees. The remaining employees who were already above the minimum received a 2% increase in base pay. Board voted in April of 2013 to implement that, the new pay scale and those two options. Those new salaries took effect in late May. And we have made no adjustments or changes since that time. Manager requests, HR was tasked with determining what the current cost of implementing option three of that study would have been. And as you may or may not recall, that option called providing a pay increase to the employees that would be equal to one-half of 1% of their base salary for each year of service in position. For example, a maintenance worker one in buildings and grounds who have been in that position for eight years would receive a 4% increase under that option. And you can tell that the study pointed out the, the reasoning behind doing so. Derek also requested that we continue along the path of Springstead's methodology to try to determine that current cost. Now, I made the argument essentially that instead of going back to Springstead, it was better if we simply did this in term. And get a little bit more of that in a moment. This option is to be clear, and I know this has been a topic of discussion among our employees. This does not reflect your total years of service with the county, nor does it reflect your total years of service in the local government retirement system. It's years of service in your current position. Another thing that happens in the HR world is when you do a pay study, that study tends to assume that when an employee was moved into a new position, that they were compensated at the current market rate at that time. And sometimes pay studies find out, well. And sometimes pay studies find out, well, life finds out that's not always the case. What we have been doing since then, with some help from Kim Camp and payroll along the Pan area, we are literally performing an internal audit of all of our personnel. We have pulled everybody's jacket that is a full-time employee, and we are making sure that we have accurate account of their current years of service in position, and we're getting very close to having that completed. Now, as Matt and Finance Director were telling you, in addition to simply looking at salary changes, the other thing we've got to do is we've got to account for fringe, FICA, Medicare, 401K, longevity. Not only that, the effect that the new salary has when it comes to overtime, it's worth our share of stephies and EMTs. When we get done with this, we may end up realizing that we may have to explore some different alternatives. But ultimately, what we will deliver to you is that the numbers for option three and any other alternatives that we have, we will have a portion of time for the budget to The study also noted that in addition to options one, two, and three, that when you have a new pay scale, you have really, you need to try to do something to administer it going forward. And you need to take a factor like the Consumer Price Index, and you try to utilize that to make some annual adjustments in base pay. Very quick, and I'll wrap it up with this. One effect that we saw with our new pay scale is that we automatically ended up with some compression issues. Let me go back to my example. That maintenance worker one in buildings and grounds who had eight years of service, more than likely, he or she was simply brought up to a new minimum. Okay? That's great. But what happens is that if there's another maintenance one worker position that opens up, that new employee comes in at the same dollars that that year employee was making. And that, that, that presents a number of issues. So an annual adjustment in base pay would help us begin to alleviate that compression problem if we leave our new pay scale intact. If we don't try to take that Consumer Price Index and raise that pay scale by that percentage. Bottom line, if I could suggest, I think we really need to have some, some method for advancing our employees through the pay range for their position. Because ultimately, if you don't for five, six years down the road, you will be finishing at the request of the manager or H R, another pay study, and we will go through all of this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just to echo what Mike has said, I did get the H R department and payroll to look at that study done by Springstead and kind of employ that same methodology moving forward. If it was implemented on phases one and two, I mean, if we're going to look at implementing phase three, it needs to be done on the same grounds, I mean, the same circumstances. And as Mike said, you look at that phases one and two, basically what happened was your, your new hires or those coming on that typically held positions with a minimum salary grade below what was coined the market average for our peer group, all those base minimums got moved up to a certain level. So you had some people that were working at a, at a minimum salary below the new minimum that had a $6,000 raise to get them up to that minimum pay scale. Well, at the same time, if you had a fifteen-year employee that was somewhere between the minimum pay grade and the midpoint, then that minimum pay grade got moved up, but it wasn't enough to affect that fifteen-year employee. So basically what happened, if you didn't get, it rewarded the, the employees that were newer to make the counting. And your long-serving, um, tenured department heads, your fifteen, twenty-year employees, for the most part, got left out. And when Mike has shown me some preliminary numbers and following through with Springstead's phase three, I think, like he said, it doesn't, it doesn't, it rewards years in position. So there is some instances where you have an employee that's been working in the organization for twenty years that is making below the midpoint of the salary grade that if, if you, but they switched positions five years ago and moved into a, a leadership position that will still be making below that midpoint. And, and that's what Mike was talking about, advance, a mechanism for advancing an employee through the pay scale. And I think that that's what we're going to take a look at. We're going to call Springstead back in, and I want to know for myself, um, I wanted, I wanted to clarify a few, a few points. And we might talk to some other people as well, but we will perform our due diligence and, and hopefully we'll be able to provide the board with, with some numbers because that, you know, like I've said all along, we can have the best equipment and the, and the, uh, the best tools possible, but without, without employees turning around. So we'll see what we can bring back and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to, to fit it into this.
We'll be anxious to see what you can bring back this. All part of being big. General, we allocated some time, we certainly don't have to take that, still expectations. If we have any directives or our county manager, we have any comments, general comments about the, uh, what we're seeing the herd day, observations, directives. I think that you're, you're a fresh member at the, uh, the, uh, any options. I guess there's two schools to talk here. We can either pay the county manager and bring back to us a good thing. We can tag team with that responsibility and then even learn at, at that time, or we can, we can give him some basic construction, what we expect, that highlight could be now, if we choose to do that.
You're doing a good job on the right. Very good. You just tell me something like you want. Let us look at.
I think reality is the work. It's taxpayer money. From all of us, I've taxed a lot of this year on my part on the primary now. Do you all keep your?
Mine's.
But you're put down here each time. It's all right. Fair, fair. Money, bills, your job. Oh, so the primary, yeah. Primary residence.
And I, I actually would like to pull it home and see what ours did and live with like, and we were all over play. Mine, mine bagged my house from hell. But I did primary until I finished my basement, like seven years. So I, I went up significantly, so I'll have a pretty good tax increase. Mr. Tate, Black Lottok, his house is actually down in value, that's what we're probably getting a tax degree of college, which they're about the same, I think, a little bit.
It's $300 down, taxes up on it.
Yeah. And I'll remember.
So let's just be frugal, but what we're maybe win here is hard-earned money.
Agreed.
And even though all the economic indicators say that the economy is on the rebound, I think we need to be very cautious in how we allocate tax funds. Maybe did a good job last year, Derek. And it would be you being the, uh, the biggest student.
I would agree with that, but what?
Just one, one payment from Lori. Lori, would you pay check on the handout that Trey gave on the, on the two point seven QZL money? What would I pay them for?
Zero percent. I'm assuming it's QZL zero percent for that. That's what it's.
That same thing.
So we divided it by ten or fifteen years, whatever.
Fifteen years.
We did Highlands QZL ten, we have that much, our construction fifteen.
Fifteen.
Well, the last one was, that's what I'm saying, I don't know any particulars. It's not always.
We may need to call the folks at the state.
It's not always zero. Like since the Nana Halo was like one point one percent.
It'll be a, that, that number doesn't stay static. If, if it changes, then you'll need the, then you're going to need a check.
And Halo was more.
Last time we checked, it was three dollars a cent. I would like to see what you found out. It's all, all for the big, big picture. I think we're all agreeing. Yeah, I got a few things I want to talk about. Derek, I'm just speaking for myself on this. The last step I was going to give you some suggestions. One is, again, I'm speaking for me, not anybody else, that is the, I think we do need to be, pay special attention this year to remaining revenue. Let the general public swallow their tax increase or tax decrease for many reasons. I know you as manager, we're looking at every revenue source that you can, but I think it might be interesting to dwell into some of the capital projects that have been closed out in the last few years, we're getting ready to close out, and what kind of funds are remaining in those, or what might, do we have to be paying for moving forward in those to get those projects closed out? It might be interesting for the board for us to see where we stand in some ways. Based upon what we heard today, it's going to be very hard for you to work in, a lot of these increases, but I know they're necessary for healthcare reasons and other issues. But I personally, the phase three pay plan was important and mandatory. I run a lot of employees through my business, and I know how hard I'm struggling every day. Every paycheck, we're not only paying them, but coming up out of fairly compensation. So that in turn keep our customers happy, and in turn continue to be on this business. So I think that's important, but I don't know if we swallowed it. It's a, it's a, it's a personal, really, important. It's also important for me that we keep taking care of our schools and our buildings. I'm just going to throw this out to y'all as a board, and I think it might be good for us to investigate and take advantage of the potential of doing a four percent sales tax increase, putting out for a referendum on next year, for a referendum next year, and maybe dedicate that money to our schools a hundred percent of the, I think that is a possibility. And again, that's just my personal opinion, and I'm glad it was for the board. If the board is ready to talk about it at some point, I'm ready. Third thing, and this is a personal matter, uh, myself and several others in Highlands have been able to collect about, I don't know, we're up to about 300,000 donations to improve the Highlands track and softball field. I'll be emailing you all out a little email about that in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully I'll have on our agenda for the next month. But I'm hoping that the county will step into that improvement project as well.
Given I met with Mr. Mark Williams up there, and he's very gracious, offered $100,000, $50,000 over that project, so, and he's very appreciative of the job we're doing.
Where is that? Is that at the high school?
Yes.
Behind the school? Is it behind or in front of the school?
Front of the school. Don't ride inside of it. I'll make that, that's all I have. Just a couple of comments close, what I'm doing, this board has had to say, I can't disagree with anything I've heard today as far as overall big picture. Derek, I think you heard us echo, we've got faith in you, put this budget together, all these are, everything we talk about, they're smaller pieces of the large picture, and you know, you'll, you'll get that. I, I don't think there's, there's any tendency on this board, I heard Paul Talker Jim say it, I'll say it, I, I don't think that, that budget would be approved, that there would be anything above the revenue pool act rate since that board. So I think that's probably a good directive as far as where to go. I am, I've said this before, and I'll make this only as a comment, the school's capital out later. I was involved in the school, working the long-range plan to start back in 1998, replacing old, aging, undersized classroom schools with newer, modern schools. That process, I think this has been waiting, that deck's rolling off the books. But I've said before, those new schools are now starting to be ten and twelve years old. They're not new schools anymore, they're new compared to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds that we had. But we're going to have to look at putting a little bit more in capital out later part of the budget. My view says more, industry says you need about two percent of the value of the buildings. And even if you said 50 million was the value for our buildings, that's, that's not even close. But let's use 50 million, two percent to a million dollar a year. And I think we put 200,000 in last year, so as we move forward, not suggesting any figure, but I just think we need to think about the fact that carpet being re-replaced, heating system go out, those kind of things happen. And what you don't want to do, just like with your own home, if you say, well, I'm not spending anything or very minimal on repairs, you're not saving anything, all you do is put off. Because those repairs have, the roof has to be replaced, the air conditioner has to be replaced, you have to have new paint, new carpet, those things have to happen. So if you, if you put them off, you're only putting them off for somebody else, passing that to another board for you. So I think we need to think about beginning to put some more money as we can in the capital out later. Anything else?
The same, Mr. Chairman, is we should all be proud to live in a, a progressive county in Canada, that's actually the one. You can see where we've come from the last eight, nine years, due recession period, we built, we invested 45 million dollars in the school. They have low interest rate, and the rates are low off, they always have the needs, the needs don't stop. And, uh, I think that county manager will come back with a good budget, I think it will be thankful if I have to discuss, uh, things. It's a part of a lot of counties, and I mean, it's a part of county where we have to start taxing it, but a lot of counties want to have discretion to that. It's a privilege to have these good people.
Thank you, King. She's got a meeting. Some of them. I'll play with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention.